All right, I want to welcome everyone to the NatU Hill Room for this meeting of the Monroe County Council. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order for Tuesday, October 15, 2024. I want to note for the record that we have with us Counselor Hawke, Counselor McKim, Counselor Iverson, Counselor Wiltz, Counselor Crossley, and I'm Trent Deckard, and the Presiding Officer Chair. Uh, I would ask all councilors to join, by the way, I want to note Counselor Munson is absent from us and excused. I'd like to call us all to do the Pledge of Allegiance if you join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Mr. Pearl.
All right, thank you very much. Item number three is adoption of agenda, and I'd open it to council. It's a long agenda, I know that. That is the business we've got today. But does anyone wish to add anything to the agenda? I've got an item myself I need to add, but I wanted to see from councilors. Can I do a quick scan? All right, seeing none, I do want to note the council has received the resignation of Andrew Gunther, who was an appointee to the Environmental Commission, was serving as Chair of that organization. I'd like to add item 8B, an item to acknowledge that resignation, and I'll do it with unanimous consent. If there's no objection. All right, so ordered. All right, so with the agenda modified now that it is, uh, no other changes from councilors being noted, I will take us to voice vote. All those in favor of adopting the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, unanimously adopted. Thank you very much, council. Let's move on to item number four, and this is a public comment. And so there'll be a time limit of three minutes per speaker for public comment on items not on the agenda. And if we have anyone wishing to make a public comment on items not on the agenda here in the NatU Hill Room, you'll come forward to either that podium or that table. And if you're on teams, raise your hand and we'll recognize you as well. So public comment on items not in the agenda. Come on forward. With this gentleman first. Hi there.
Hello, councilors. Um, my name is Wesley Conway. I am a resident of Monroe County. I live on Woodyard Road between Curry and Vernal Pike. I just wanted to use my time today to, um, voice my opposition to the Cowden property as a prospective site for the new Monroe County Jail. Woodyard Road right there, and, um, large portions of Vernal Pike are residential in nature. And the east side of the Cowden property has, is just lined with homes. And so that would essentially put the jail in a bunch of people's backyards. And, um, I just don't see that as an appropriate location for our jail. Whereas the North Park location, it doesn't have a home in sight. And I know that it is, you know, being eyed for economic development, but I think, um, the safety and security of our residents should come first. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and sorry, our meeting got started a little bit late and kept our public commenters waiting. If you want to come forward, uh, next speaker, come on up to the podium. And again, if you have a public comment on teams, raise your hand and we'll get to you.
Hello, um, my name is Joe Davis, thirty-year resident of Monroe County. And I also too would like to address the appropriate location of the, uh, of the county jail and Justice Center. That best location would be where the proposed, uh, expansion of the Monroe County Convention Center is, uh, is currently slated to be located. The public has no desire for this, uh, expanded convention center in this way. Sure, there can be improvements, but it's more logical to go north on the former Bunker and Robertson property. However, keeping the jail and the Justice Center is very important as a downtown resource, as it always has been. All the judges, uh, the majority of the, uh, of the council that come to the jail live south and they live east of downtown. Uh, I've been meeting with, uh, jail, with, uh, Monroe County Sheriff, uh, deputies, uh, and other personnel and the bailiffs in the jail, and am scheduling a tour of the courts because there is a way that we, as a community, can create a justice center that will serve all of us. Not only that, but if we do not, if we are able to convince the city not to sell the Bunker and Robertson property for a hotel, an unnecessary hotel to be built there, then that could potentially be too another space for the public to take care of the public's needs. So these are the items that I wish, uh, you all to focus on and all members of the public watching. There is a way for all of us to win, and that is when we refocus our attentions on the people of this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, got another comment? Come on forward.
Good evening, council members. My name is Taylor Brown. I am the new-ish Legislative Affairs Specialist for the City of Bloomington, for the office of the mayor. The mayor, despite her best efforts, has been unable thus far to clone herself and be in multiple places at once. So while she is endeavoring to do so, she has sent me in the meantime. I am, uh, two-month-old in my position. Um, I've heard some rumors of city and county friction, and I have no idea what they are because everyone I've met has just been absolutely lovely. But I am here in the meantime to reiterate our full cooperation with the county. And if you have any needs whatsoever, please, 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 please feel free to reach out. My slate is significantly lighter than the mayor and the deputy mayor. So if you are looking to get a quicker response, I will be happy to facilitate and make sure messages get passed along. Um, I will limit my comments there because you have budget and we just went through ours, and I wouldn't wish that on my worst enemy. So have a good night, council.
You're already helping us a lot. Thank you so much. We appreciate you being here. Send our greetings to the mayor. Other public comments, I was looking to council for a second there. Maybe you all want to get up there. Any on teams, raise your hand. Please note, public comments, all are welcome in the NatU Hill Room or on teams. We want to make sure we get them. All right, friends, it looks like we've satisfied public comment. We'll next go to item number five on the agenda, which is department updates. Uh, there'll be a time limit of ten minutes per department. And if we have anyone wishing to make a department update here, these are the departments that help administer the county. We'll invite you to come forward here in the NatU Hill Room and talk to us. Anyone attending via teams, it looks like I've got a hand up on teams. Maybe? No, no hand on teams. Any department updates in here? Are we good, departments? How about again on teams? All right. Looks like we don't have anyone, no one scheduled, correct? Awesome. Okay. Well, thank you, departments. Of course, you're also always welcome here. Let's move on to item number six, and this is council liaison updates. Uh, and so I'll go to council for your updates. Yes, Counselor Iverson.
Thank you, Mr. Deckard. Uh, mine is quick. For those of you familiar with the Justice Fiscal Advisory Commission, uh, we, uh, have, uh, updated that site with some useful links. Included are, um, the spreadsheets, uh, on jail budget scenarios prepared by Counselor Jeff McKim. Uh, that way you kind of know, uh, how we were thinking about that, as well as, um, a tally of inmates, uh, that we have, um, included there too. So, uh, the best way to get to that website, of course, is simply by Googling or going into your favorite browser, uh, JFAK Monroe County, and it'll come right up for you.
Thanks for making that report and staying on that. Counselor Wiltz.
Thank you. Um, continuing with the justice acronyms, I would like to update on JRAAC, which is the Justice Reinvestment Advisory Council. Um, and we had a quarterly meeting yesterday, um, at which we had a presentation from an organization called Justice Counts. And they are providing technical assistance to, oh, Linda's looking at me, so I better get this right. To, um, counties and agencies within counties, um, on providing, uh, a dashboard-type display for justice-related data. So our Community Corrections and Probation Department have, um, been working to upload data and get, and get kind of situated with this totally free-to-the-county service. And the JRAAC, it consists of multiple other, uh, county government bodies, including, um, the sheriff's, um, office as well as, um, YSB and other end courts. And so there are a lot of other ways in which we can engage with this incredible benefit. They provide an amazing amount of assistance, and I would encourage anyone with interest to go to, it's justicecounts dot, dot CSGjusticecenter.org. And, um, CSG is the Council of State Governments, thank you. And so that's the, the home organization for, that is providing this service to, um, folks across the, the United States, actually. So I encourage anyone in the public to check it out. They've got lots and lots of work and, um, really good, uh, data behind what they are providing to, to us. And, um, it seems like with very little extra effort on the part of local government agencies, we could be doing a big service for our community in providing, um, easily accessible data. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Wiltz. And I, I just do want to add, I want to thank all the councilors that approached this justice question by going out, having these meetings, having these discussions, getting more information, talking to the public, getting even more information, and trying to figure it all out for a part-time council not too shabby. Particularly when we have done some of the hard work we've done in the last couple of weeks. I, I want to recognize that. This is not Hollywood and sitting on our hands up here. This is work and it's appropriate. Other councilors, I do want to make one note for the record. The county council has called a work session, uh, in combination with a few different entities, I believe. That includes commissioners. Tell me if I've got this wrong, Ms. Turner King. We've got commissioners on that work session on the twenty-second. We've got council, we've got sheriff, right? The sheriff's confirmed they'll be there. There's someone from the sheriff's office. We've got, um, judges, the courts, or so, a representative at least to talk about this location question that is before us. And, uh, two public comments and some council comments have referred to. And it's an appropriate question to be discussed among those entities and bodies. And so what, the reason I bring this up to you all is, um, I would like to ask councilors for items they'd like to see on that agenda. I'm not going to ask for that right now, but I later in this meeting will. And so I want to make sure that that's properly before everybody's head. So maybe make your wish list the things you'd hope we'd talk about and get into. Doesn't mean we can get to everything, but certainly I want to make sure that's well represented. All right, anything else from liaison reports? Okay. Well, let's move on then to item seven, which is the consent agenda.
Counsel, I move to approve the following consent agenda items. A, the Health Department's request and fund eleven fifty-nine dash zero 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 zero, health fund for the creation of a new account line, thirty-eight one-ten, services and charges. The Health Department's request and fund eleven sixty-one dash zero 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 zero, local public health for a category transfer of twenty-nine thousand, three hundred forty-six dollars and forty cents from the services category to the personnel category. C, the Health Department's request and fund eleven sixty-one dash zero 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 zero, local public health for the creation of two new account lines, um, ten one seventy-eight maternal and child health coordinator and ten one seventy-nine, vital records administrative support assistance director. D, the Employee Services Department's request and fund one thousand dash zero three zero nine, county general HR for a category transfer of four hundred fifty dollars from the services category to the supplies category. And last but not least, E, the Court's request and fund one thousand dash zero two two five, county general courts for a category transfer of forty-nine thousand, one hundred twenty-four dollars and fourteen cents from the personnel category to the services category.
Second. Okay. Any questions from council on the consent agenda? Any public comment on the consent agenda? And if you have any, come forward to the podium here in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote on, or a voice vote on the consent agenda. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is adopted. Thank you. Item number eight is board and commission appointments.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and possible approval of a revision of council members on the Personnel Administrative Committee, also known as PAC.
Second. Right, we've got a motion and a second. We'll open this, tell me if I get this out of turn. We'll open this up for discussion among councilors. And essentially, uh, on PAC, Counselor Hawke, who's graciously served on PAC for a number of years and experience, uh, has indicated that she will be going off of PAC, uh, effective now. And we need another PAC member, so that's at three strong. Current PAC members, uh, are Counselor Iverson, uh, Counselor McKim. Uh, and so we certainly have an opportunity here for another member to step into that service. And so I'm going to open that up for discussion on members that would have an interest in that, that we can engage and get that appointed so that it can complete the year's time. Okay? Counselors, I'd open it for any, I saw no hand go up. Counselor Crossley's gone to paper, rock, paper, scissors.
That's right, yeah.
Yes, Counselor Wiltz.
President Deckard, I would be happy to serve on PAC for the remainder of this year if that is helpful to council.
Move with your point, Counselor Wiltz, as the third member of PAC to the uppermost of the year.
There's a motion, it's a bipartisan motion in a second, which is always a good sign. All right. Any discussion on that? Look at the chair of PAC down there, quite relieved.
I, I mean, uh, there's not that many meetings left, so thank you for your service. And I would like to take this moment to publicly recognize, uh, Councilmember Hawke and her valuable service to the Personnel Administration Committee. Uh, I said this very publicly in our last meeting, uh, we could not have done what we did without her, uh, wisdom and expertise. And the, both of those things are going to be sorely missed on PAC. Uh, thank you so much for everything you're doing for the residents of this county.
And it certainly is my hope, uh, that with the remaining time left, that the newly appointed, uh, member will have an opportunity to, uh, really, uh, become involved with PAC and understand what the rules are. And, and hopefully those rules will be sent out. I did send a message to County Legal to get us those updated rules. And it might have come, uh, might have been sent out, but I've not been able to be, uh, as involved in the last few days as I normally am. So, uh, just, uh, because my suggestion is, if we want to change the rules, if we want to do something other than the way it was originally established, then, then we need to just change that so all departments, everyone will be on the same page, then it's fair to everyone.
Thank you, Counselor Hawke. Other councilors? I, I want to thank Counselor Wiltz for jumping in here. I believe there is technically one meeting of the year, although back when, two, back when I was PAC chair. My gosh, I believe we were rocking in there with Santa Claus at the end one year. So just be aware of that too, we may have faked. Um, I do want to thank you for stepping forward on that. I have a lot of thoughts about PAC processes that I want to study with those rules. Uh, it seems that PAC is, uh, generating a lot of work that's coming before council. And I have some thoughts on how that might, over time, uh, be operating the most efficient for particularly department heads and folks that have a vested interest in that, and also this council. Uh, we, I, I've noticed our agendas over the years have been creeping up. Tonight's twenty-seven, I believe that's a record, at least in my terms, um, twenty-seven agenda items. And I want to make sure we're efficiently doing what we can here, but also doing it in a way that we're able to see the larger scale, bigger pictures that I, I think some items may be sometimes getting past us. So I want to make sure that process supports that. Okay. We've got a nominee here, and no one's objected to her, including her, which is half the battle. Counselors, all those in favor of Counselor Wiltz going on PAC signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor Wiltz, I'm sorry, but no. Congratulations and thank you.
Why, thank you.
All right, let's go to item eight B, and this was an acknowledgement of her resignation. And I just want to acknowledge receipt of Andrew, Andrew Gunther's, pardon me, resignation as the council appointment to the Environmental Commission. Mr. Gunther has been a very outspoken and active member of our community, and particularly a young leader doing things. And it's always a loss when you lose a leader like that in an appointed position. But it's also a loss when you lose any leader in an appointed position. And I think that, uh, for these boards and commissions, we vitally need that, uh, non-elected input. And so as we seek for a, a replacement for Mr. Gunther and others, uh, we certainly need to keep in mind, uh, finding good qualified people and encouraging them all to step forward. Okay? With that, any additional comments from council? And I have a note here that Mr. Gunther had been nine years on Environmental Commission. I know he was in his recent iteration, but is it nine total?
I think it's nine total.
Wow. He had served, uh, with, uh, me back when I, before I was elected on the Environmental Commission for quite a long time. And, uh, we just wish him the very best as he goes forward with his endeavors. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, uh, and those boards and commissions, if you have interest in that, go to the county webpage, look for boards and commissions, or simply Google Monroe County, Indiana Boards and Commissions, and let us know if you have an interest out there. All right. Seeing no other comments from council, we'll keep us moving. Thank you, Mr. Gunther. Number nine is our first reading of the 2025 budget. We'll have now, council, the first reading of the 2025 budgets for Monroe Fire Protection District, then Monroe County Waste Reduction District, and then Monroe County Government itself. There is going to be a lot of reading involved in all of this. And so what I'm going to do is, uh, get some volunteers to assist with reading it. Every counselor should have these budgets in the packets that Michelle put before you. And so I'm going to fill a counselor name in on each of these, and then we'll just go through them one at a time. So can I get a volunteer counselor to read the Fire Protection District's budget? Who would like to take a crack at that? Crossley, all right. And then how about for the budget of the Waste Reduction District?
I can do that.
Okay, McKim. And then how about the Monroe County 2025 budget?
You could even split it between the, uh, the home rule funds and the, uh, levy funds if you wanted to divide it further.
Okay, so Counselor Wiltz, throw your hand go up again. So that's home rule for perhaps you could do? And Counselor Crossley says she'll do the other funds. Okay. And I think that covers it, right, Michelle?
Uh, then you'll, uh, sorry, then you also have the first readings for the ordinance, but you can do that when you cross that bridge.
For the ordinance and salary ordinance, and I might jump in on that to assist, or Counselor Iverson.
I don't have an assignment, so.
Well, you've got one now. You're doing salary, sir. All right, all right. So we're good. All right, let's go with this reading. And so we'll start now with the first reading, uh, of the Monroe, 2025 Monroe Fire Protection District budget. And I'll go to Counselor Crossley for that.
Thank you. Um, ordinance for appropriations and tax rates. Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty-seven. Be it ordained by the Monroe County Council that for the expenses of the Monroe County Fire Protection District for the year ending in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated in order set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year, unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, the purpose, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the Monroe Fire Protection District, the property tax levies and property tax rates, as herein specified, are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage by, and approval by the Monroe County Council. Funds, um, fund code eighty-six zero three, fund name special fire general. Adopted budget sixteen thousand nine, oh, I'm sorry, sixteen million, nine hundred fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred ten dollars. Adopted levy tax, nine million, eight hundred, three thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars. Adopted tax rate, zero point two five, uh, four five. Fund code eighty-six ninety-one, special com, or special Q buyer. Adopted budget, one million, two hundred sixty-seven thousand, one hundred seventeen dollars. Adopted tax levy, one million, three hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars. Adopted tax rate, zero point zero three three three. For the total of eighteen million, two hundred twenty-four thousand, nine hundred twenty-seven dollars for adopted budget. Adopted tax levy total, eleven million, one hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars. Adopted tax rate total, zero point two eight seven eight. And then home rule funds not reviewed by DLGF. Um, fund code ninety-five hundred, fund name restricted, restricted donation fund, eighty-eight seventy-five. Adopted budget, three hundred thirty-two thousand, for a total adopted budget of three hundred thirty-two thousand dollars.
Second. Uh, thank you, Counselor Crossley. We've got a motion and a second. Are there any further questions or comments from the council regarding the 2025 Monroe Fire Protection District budget? Note, we are not adopting this this evening, but there's any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Uh, we will go ahead and move on to ordinance B. Ms. Turner King, are we doing everything as should be? Okay, good. Let us know. And so for B, Counselor McKim, will you please read ordinance twenty twenty-four, uh, dash forty-eight, Monroe County Waste Reduction District 2025 budget?
Counsel, uh, first, this is first reading ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty-eight. Be it ordained by, by the Monroe County Council that for the expenses of Monroe County Solid Waste Management District for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, sums herein specified are hereby appropriated in order to set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year, unless otherwise stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purpose of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Monroe County Solid Waste Management District, the property tax levies and property tax rates, as herein specified, are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This, or, uh, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Monroe County Council. Fund, uh, twelve fifteen, non-reverting capital projects, budget zero, adopted tax levy zero, adopted tax rate zero. Uh, code, fund code eight-two-one-zero, special solid waste management fund. Adopted budget, three million, three hundred thirty thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars. Adopted tax levy, two million, two hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars. And adopted tax rate, zero point zero two six six dollars. And fund code eight-two-eight-three, solid waste district debt service. And fund code eight two eight three, solid waste district debt service. Adopted budget three hundred four, three hundred four hundred, uh, three hundred seventy thousand. Adopted tax levy two hundred ninety nine, uh, two hundred ninety nine thousand nine hundred ninety one. Adopted tax rate zero point zero zero three five dollars. For a total of adopted budget, three million six hundred thirty four thousand six hundred nineteen dollars. Adopted tax levy two million five hundred sixty five thousand two hundred twenty nine dollars. And adopted tax rate zero point zero three zero one dollars.
Thank you very much, Counselor McKim. Are there any further questions or comments from the council regarding this first reading of the 2025 Monroe County Waste Reduction District budget? All right. Counselor Wiltz?
I just have a question about the, the, the two different names of the district on the ordinance. Is that intentional and is it okay?
The state still registers this, um, waste reduction as solid waste management district. I believe, you know, the paperwork has gone in, but it hasn't reached gateway.
So it will change then at some point next year, probably? Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you. All right. Seeing no more, we will move on to item C, which is ordinance 2024-49 Monroe County 2025 budget. And to that end, I'll ask Counselor Wiltz to please begin reading ordinance 2024-49 Monroe County Government. Wait a minute, yeah, Monroe County Government 2025 budgets, and then Counselor Crossley will complete.
Okay. Be it ordained by the Monroe County Council that for the expenses of Monroe County for the year ending December 31st, 2025, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated in order to set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year, unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Monroe County, the property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Monroe County Council. The funds included are fund code zero zero six one rainy day. Adopted budget three million dollars. Adopted tax levy zero. Adopted tax rate zero. Fund zero one zero one general, fifty three million nine hundred thirty thousand five hundred ninety six dollars of adopted budget. Adopted tax levy seventeen million eight hundred twenty eight thousand nine hundred fifty three dollars. Adopted tax rate zero point two zero nine zero. Fund zero one zero two, election registration. Adopted budget six hundred sixty three thousand six hundred twenty three dollars. Tax levy one million twenty nine thousand six hundred twenty four dollars. Tax rate zero point zero one two one. Fund zero one two four, 2015 reassessment. Budget of eight hundred eighty three thousand six hundred fifteen dollars. Tax levy one million eleven thousand five hundred fifty six dollars. Tax rate zero point zero one one nine. Debt service is fund zero one eight zero and adopted budget is four million dollars. Adopted tax levy is three million seven hundred seventy five, eight hun, eight hundred sixty seven dollars. And adopted tax rate is zero point zero three three eight. Fund zero two zero three, self-insurance. Adopted budget of eight million four hundred ninety seven thousand five hundred dollars with a zero, uh, tax levy, zero tax rate. Fund zero two five four, local income tax. Four million two hundred seventeen thousand sixty three dollars of adopted budget with zero levy and zero rate. Fund zero two five six, public safety, local income tax. Budget four million five hundred thirty six thousand five hundred forty eight dollars, zero levy, zero tax rate. Fund zero six one six, convention and visitors bureau. Budget two million seven hundred three thousand three hundred twenty dollars, zero tax levy, zero tax rate. Fund code zero six one six, convention and visitors bureau. Did I just do that one?
Yes.
Sorry. Fund zero seven zero two highway. Four million six hundred seventy seven thousand four hundred and seventy two dollars of adopted budget with zero levy and zero rate. Zero seven zero three highway special. Adopted budget two million two hundred ninety eight thousand three hundred sixty three dollars, zero levy, zero rate. Fund zero six, uh, excuse me, zero seven zero six, local road and street. Budget is one million three hundred sixty five thousand four dollars with zero levy and zero rate. Fund zero seven nine zero cumulative bridge. Adopted budget is two million two hundred thirteen thousand one hundred seventy nine dollars with an adopted tax levy of two million three hundred eighty two thousand five hundred ninety nine dollars and a tax rate of zero point zero two one three. Fund zero nine, seven nine two, county major bridge. Adopted budget is three million five hundred thirty two thousand sixty one dollars with an adopted tax levy of three million seven hundred twenty four thousand nine hundred eight dollars and tax rate of zero point zero three three three. Fund zero eight zero one, health. Adopted budget nine hundred twenty four thousand nine hundred forty three dollars. Tax levy two hundred sixty two thousand two hundred seventeen dollars. Tax rate is zero point zero zero three one. Fund one three one zero, park, non-reverting capital. The budget is eighty thousand dollars with a zero tax levy and zero tax rate. Fund two one zero two, aviation airport. Adopted budget is one million seven hundred fifty thousand six hundred thirty seven dollars. Adopted tax levy is one million two hundred forty three thousand two hundred one dollars and the rate is zero point zero one four six. Fund two three nine one, cumulative capital development. Is budgeted at three million eight hundred forty eight thousand one hundred ninety one dollars. The ta, adopted tax levy is three million seven hundred twenty four thousand nine hundred eight dollars. And the adopted tax rate is zero point zero three three three. Fund four zero two, economic development is budgeted at zero dollars with zero tax levy and zero tax rate. The total for these funds is one hundred three thousand, one hundred three million one hundred twenty two thousand one hundred fifteen dollars of adopted budget with an adopted tax levy of thirty four million nine hundred eighty three thousand eight hundred thirty three dollars and the adopted tax rate of zero point three seven two four.
Home rule funds not reviewed by DLGF. Fund code ninety five hundred extradition and shares. Adoption budget five hundred thirty eight dollars. Nine, fund code ninety five zero one, surveyors corner perpetuation. Adopted budget one hundred seventy four thousand three hundred seventy three dollars. Code ninety five zero two, local public health services. Two million nine hundred forty two thousand two hundred seventy six dollars. Ninety five zero three, Monroe County nine one one fund, seven hundred thirty seven thousand dollars. Fund ninety five zero four, Monroe County Convention Center debt. Six hundred, adopted budget six hundred thirty six thousand. Ninety five zero five, auditors ineligible deductions, two hundred forty one thousand nine hundred sixty two dollars. Code ninety five zero eight, user fee jury pay. Adopted budget thirty six thousand five hundred dollars. Code, fund code ninety five zero nine, user fees juvenile probation. Nineteen, adopted budget nineteen thousand eight hundred eighty three dollars. Code ninety five ten, user fees adult probation. Adopted budget two hundred seventy thousand five hundred ninety six dollars. Ninety five eleven, user fees project income job. Adopted budget seventy two, I'm sorry, seven hundred twenty two thousand nine hundred twenty one dollars. Ninety five twelve supplemental, supplemental probation department services, adopted.
Sorry, public defender.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Public defender services, excuse me. Uh, adopted budget nine hundred ninety two thousand four hundred twelve dollars. Ninety five thirteen, clerk's record perpetuation. Adopted budget one hundred forty three thousand six hundred forty six dollars. Ninety five fourteen, user fees diversion prosecutor. Eighty six thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. Ninety five fifteen, user fees court alcohol drug. Two hundred twenty two thousand, I'm sorry, two hundred twenty four thousand four hundred forty three dollars. Ninety five sixteen, local health maintenance. One hundred thirty nine thousand nine hundred sixty three dollars. Ninety five seventeen, emergency planning right to know, sixteen thousand fifty dollars. Ninety five nineteen, misdemeanor correctional. Is that right? Oh, community corrections. One hundred fifty one thousand three hundred dollars. Ninety five twenty one, alternative dispute resolution, fourteen thousand seven hundred. Ninety five twenty two, sales disclosure county share, one hundred one thousand four hundred sixteen dollars. Ninety five twenty three, convention, but vis, convention visitor capital improvement maintenance, one hundred thousand dollars. Ninety five twenty four, county offender transportation, three thousand dollars. Ninety five twenty five, local health department trust accounting, eleven thousand dollars. Ninety five twenty six, user fees problem solving courts, fifty five thousand five hundred seven dollars. Ninety five twenty seven, Wassa Economic Development Richland Township TIF, one million eight hundred seventy seven thousand eight hundred fifty six dollars. Ninety five twenty eight, Forty Sixth Corridor Economic Development Bloomington Township TIF, four hundred ninety nine thousand eight hundred seventy one dollars. Ninety five twenty nine, Fullerton Pike Economic Development TIF, one hundred thirty two thousand seven hundred dollars. Ninety five thirty, plat book, five hundred dollars. Ninety five thirty one, convention center operating, six hundred thirty six thousand dollars. Ninety five thirty two, user fees cable franchise, five hundred twenty eight thousand nine hundred sixty seven dollars. Ninety five thirty five, PSAP interlocal, two million five hundred eighty five thousand dollars. Ninety five forty three, public health emergency fund, twenty thousand dollars. Ninety five forty four, identification security protection, eighteen thousand dollars. Ninety five forty eight, park non-reverting operation. Three hundred nine thousand six hundred seventy five dollars. Ninety five fifty one, recorders records perpetuation, three hundred fifty two thousand eight hundred seventy seven dollars. Nine hundred, or nine fifty, ninety five fifty two, storm water management, three million nine hundred ninety eight thousand five hundred ninety seven dollars. Ninety five fifty nine, county elected officials training, twenty thousand dollars. Ninety five eighty, lit correctional rehab facilities, five, five hundred forty one thousand two hundred sixty five dollars. Ninety five eighty eight, federal award title IV, IVD. Fifty seven thousand two hundred fifty, fifty seven thousand two hundred fifty seven dollars. Ninety five eighty nine, curry profile TIF, twenty five thousand three hundred eighty nine dollars. For a total adopted budget of nineteen million four hundred twenty six thousand three hundred and ninety dollars.
Right. Thank you, Counselors Wiltz and Crossley, who are now ready to retire after all that reading. Thank you very much. Let me go to questions, further questions or comments from the council regarding the 2025 Monroe County governmental budgets. Counselor McKim?
Yeah, I guess my, um, I know we received a new version of the 4B today and, um, wondering if the miscellaneous revenues are off. I, I just, I realize I just saw this. Particularly for, I mean, that particularly for, uh, the election fund.
Well, let's take some time to figure that out.
I mean, I, I'm, unless, uh, the auditor's table here has an immediate answer, I don't think there's, I, I don't think there's any point in scrambling to try to recalculate right now. I just want to see if you all agree that maybe it needs to be looked at and then. Do you agree that it looks like it may be off? Okay. Yeah.
So we can come back to that, uh.
Just begin, and just so everybody knows, the reason is that, that when we shift levies around, the amounts, uh, like CBET and excise tax and all that sort of thing goes along with the levy.
Yes, thanks, you, thank you, Counselor McKim. That was missed, so that adjustment will be made and we will send it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did they make the adjustment in the health for the miscellaneous? I mean, it might have already been made recently, but I wish it went correctly. But because to begin with, I mean, we've changed what we're going to leave in there.
Right. Well, I think it sounds like they're gonna, they'll, they'll look at all the, all the funds, yeah. That one looks to me like it's probably right because it's probably, it only includes the fees that, you know, that the health department gets, but that's.
Right. I mean, but I thought we put in a levy of, we, we did put in a levy.
Yeah, that's true, two hundred thousand dollars, so.
And that is precisely why we do this to this detail, and with that many eyes on that bench helping us with this. This is a healthy thing for us to figure out, and we got a minute to do it, so we're okay. All right, good, well noted. Appreciate also the auditor's willingness to kind of put that to bed for us.
Yeah, Counselor McKim. And just to confirm to everybody, these numbers included the three point two percent cost of living adjustment, right?
Also well noted and of particular interest for a lot of people out there watching. All right, any other additional questions, comments? Counselor Huck?
If the, uh, budget gets, did it get adjusted for the edit?
Looks like they've got the, uh, the special purpose and the corrections and everything. It looks like you guys got those numbers in there.
Did you make the adjustments?
All right. Well, if there are no further questions, comments, or actions on the first reading of the 2025 budget, we will conclude that and move to salary ordinances. All right. So let's go to item ten. And just a, a note, I want to offer a, a note for everyone, just so that folks knowing at home what's happening here. The council will be approving these budgets on Monday, October 28th at 5:00 PM here in the Nat U Hill Meeting Room. And let me rephrase that. We are scheduled, this council is scheduled to vote on these budgets. I can't predict what the council will do, but obviously, uh, you know, we're heading in a direction after this reading. The meeting before where we discuss a little bit more on the budgets and then six public hearings that we held for each department. Okay? All right, let's move on to item ten, and on item ten, it's going to be a first reading of the Monroe County 2025 salary ordinance for elected officials. Counselor Iverson, will you please begin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. A salary schedule and compensation policies for county elected officials, ordinance 2024-50A. Now be it ordained by the Monroe County Council of Indiana that this ordinance affixes the number of and compensation for elected officials of the county from the period of January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2025, whose salary is comprised of funds payable from any county fund. Whose salary is comprised of funds payable from any county fund or budget as provided by Indiana code thirty-six dash two dash five at sequential. Are hereby solidly fixed and the following maximum level of salary is shown on the quote elected official salary compensation grid end quote. All payments made pursuant to this ordinance are contingent upon the strict compliance with and adherence to the benefit compensation. Fiscally related and state and federally mandated requirements of the Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook. It is the intent of the county council that this language will encourage compliance with personnel policies which may have a fiscal impact on Monroe County government. For elected officials, time worked on or after January one twenty-twenty-five and prior to midnight, December thirty-first twenty-twenty-five. Shall be calculated and paid within the parameters of this salary ordinance and personnel policy handbook regardless of when the payment is issued. Elected officials shall not receive compensation above the salary range authorized for their position in the elected official compensation grid. The county auditor shall not issue pay warrants for pay that exceeds the authorized amount specified in the salary ordinance. The compensation amounts listed are an annual appro- appropriation amount. calculation of the bi-weekly salary salary rate may result in a slight variation and will not be adjusted at year end. Elected official. Schedule to establish a more equitable system of setting compensation for Monroe County elected officials not but set by the state. The county council has established within the annual salary ordinance a base rate for elected officials with a schedule of amounts to be applied. The base rate schedule is outlined in section one of the elected official salary compensation grid. The sheriff is excluded from the base rate schedule as their salary is paid pursuant to Indiana code thirty-six dash two dash thirteen dash two point five. Or Indiana code thirty-six dash two dash thirteen dash two point eight. Additional information regarding payments of certifications, supplementals and or per diems is outlined in section two. Of the elected official salary compensation grid. The Monroe County Council Policy Regarding Salaries Tied to State-Mandated Salaries. The annual salary of the Monroe County Sheriff is tied or related to the salaries mandated by the state of Indiana. For the Monroe County Circuit Judges and the Monroe County Prosecutor. The state mandated salaries are amended annually on July first. It is the intent and direction of the Monroe County Council that all salaries paid by the county council which are tied. Or related to the Monroe County Sheriff as is mandated by the state of Indiana. Shall be automatically amended at the same time as the state mandated salaries on July first. The county council recognizes that this is an exception to the general rule for county set salaries which are generally modified on January first. Presented to the Monroe County Council of Indiana Red and Fall for the first time on the fifteenth day of October twenty-four. And presented to the Monroe County Council of Indiana adopted pursuant to the Indiana code on the twentieth day of October blah blah.
Thank you very much, Counselor Iverson. I believe Ms. Turner King and Michelle, you have some things to note on this for us.
Yes, I just wanted to bring to your attention uh the base rate for the elected officials and so. With the uh three point two cola, that's going to move the base rate to seventy-eight nine fifty-nine. Uh so that's going to be the rate for the assessor, the auditor, the clerk. And the recorder and treasurer. Um as it was mentioned, the council has set up a grid with percentages. For the other elected officials, so the co- commissioners will get eighty-five percent, the coroner gets seventy percent. Council gets thirty percent and the surveyor gets ninety percent of the annual base rate. And so those numbers are there in front of you um on the screen as well as in your packet. Um we also wanted to note that uh there is a change to the auditor. And that supplemental, so I'm going to go ahead and let uh turn that over to Molly with regards to. The statute that is tied to that particular. Supplemental.
So in the past, the council has provided the auditor a supplement of five thousand dollars for her service. Her his or her service as the um secretary to both commissioners and the council. That wasn't statutorily required. Um this last legislative session, the um. There was codified a statute that allows for the providence of a supplemental for the duties of the auditor as the secretary to the commissioners and the council. However, statutorily, that supplemental is capped at two thousand five hundred dollars and because so. The language has changed to reflect that um the auditor will receive a supplemental for being the clerk at two thousand five hundred dollars. Per year um. In effort to not reduce the auditor's supplemental or salary because of this. A second supplemental of two thousand five hundred dollars is being proposed so that she would still receive the five thousand dollars. And um in talking to the auditor, one area that I don't think is statutorily required by her um office. But they do put in a lot of time doing is the gaps gaps be reporting. And so that is a proposed supplemental for council consideration.
All right, thank you. I see so uh a hand, Counselor McKim.
Thanks. And just just I just kind of want to uh remind everybody that. Uh it was also, at least in the past, our intention that the auditor and the clerk should be compassed can compensated the same. Regardless of the various statutory supplements that the General Assembly chooses to create and that this keeps that parity, right?
Correct.
Is it fair to say this is a win-win? Would that be a good description? Yeah, I see nodding up and down the bench, which is a first sign. We don't see that every day up here and probably should put a plaque on the wall for that. Other questions or discussion? One thing I want to know, and I'm going to brag on Counselor Wiltz on this one. We've not spent forever talking about elected official pay in all the other myriad of issues. Because of the formula that we're using there with that and that was. On her par, she endeavored on that like nobody's business and I. We I think this is the first year we are fully seeing that, so you can talk about employee cola. And needs for the jail and nine million other headaches that have come up rather than a bunch of elected officials talking about their pay. Other than what we have to do, of course, this evening, and I just think that's a big deal. And I think it makes sense because when I first came on this council, it didn't make sense and it went on forever and I just think this works. In my own humble way. Any other further discussion on the salary ordinance, counsel? Okay, let me check my notes here. If there is none for the salary ordinance for elected officials, we'll leave that. And we'll move on to the salary ordinance for Monroe County Government Employees and I didn't have anyone on this. But I'll read to help and if I give out, I may tap somebody's shoulder. This is for our county uh county employees, okay? This is the first reading of the twenty-twenty-five Monroe County Government Employee Salary Ordinance and Ordinance Adopting Monroe County Indiana. Salary Schedule and Compensation Policies for County Employees Ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash fifty B. Whereas the Indiana Legislature adopted Indiana Code thirty-six dash two dash three. Which established the Monroe County Council is the governing fiscal body of Monroe County and whereas. I C thirty-six dash two dash five dash three grants the Monroe County Council the power to fix the number of officers, deputies and other employees. Describe and classify positions and services, adopt schedules of compensation and hire or contract with persons. To assist in the development of schedules of compensation, whereas the Monroe County Council wishes to establish salary schedule and compensation policies. Being ordained by the Monroe County Council of Indiana, but this ordinance affixes the number and compensation employees of the county from the period of. January first twenty-twenty-five to December thirty-first twenty-twenty-five, including all officers, deputies, assistants and other employees. Whose salaries comprise the funds payable from any county fund or budget as provided by I C thirty-six dash two dash five. This compensation is limited by the following lines and maximum levels of salaries shown on the salary compensation grids. All payments made pursuant to this ordinance are contingent upon the strict compliance with and adherence to the benefit. Compensation fiscally related and state and federally mandated requirements of the Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook. It is the intent of the county council that this language will encourage. Compliance with personnel policies which may have a fiscal impact on Monroe County government. Any Monroe County employee, including those employees under a contractual agreement or whose salaries are determined by a state prescribed rule, order, guideline or mandate. Shall not receive compensation above the salary grids outlined within this ordinance. The county ordinance ordinance uh pardon me, the county auditor shall not issue pay warrants. For any pay that exceeds the authorized amount specified in the salary ordinance. The compensation amounts are listed as approximate annual appropriation amounts and the calculation of the bi-weekly. Or hourly compensation rates may result in a slight variation and will not be adjusted at year end. Compensation paid on or after January first twenty-twenty-five and prior to midnight, December thirty-first twenty-twenty-five. Shall be calculated and paid within the parameters of the salary ordinance and the personnel policy handbook regardless of when the work is performed. Specifically, the salary ordinance is applicable to dates encompassed within claim one as outlined in the twenty-twenty-five pay schedule. Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook. Any I am not covered with the salary ordinance shall be governed by the Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook. Job description classification definitions beginning calendar year twenty-twenty-two, council approved using the updated classifications. And levels for Monroe County Government Job Descriptions. Compensation levels have been updated using alphanumeric letters A through E. The listing of all classifications is outlined in section A of the ordinance notes. Full-time hire date compensation step increase schedule. Employees will attain a new compensation step increase level on the first day of the pay period, which includes the anniversary of their most recent full-time hire date. The compensation step increase schedule is outlined in section B of the ordinance notes. The compensation step increase level given to other county employees will not be given to correction center employees covered by the collective bargaining agreement. Knowledge, skills and abilities K S A compensation procedures. Employees have gone through the review process and approval to receive a knowledge, skills and abilities. Status may receive compensation at either the three or eight-year level based on the compensation grid applicable. To the assigned job description classifications and level. An approved K S A status will remain with the original requesting department for the determined period of time. Departments may request an employee's K S A status be transferred when applicable position becomes vacant within their department. An employee's K S A status does not automatically transfer with the employee and is subject to review. An employee's approved K S A status only adjusts the compensation base rate for that employee. An employee's approved K S A status is not included in the years of service pertaining to longevity and or vacation calculations. A listing of approved K S A hires with term dates is outlined in section C of the ordinance notes. Longevity scale. Employees who have an original hire date and have begun work within Monroe County Government prior to November first twenty-twenty-three. Shall receive a longevity payment for complete and uninterrupted years of service. These payments will continue until either there's a break in the employee's service or the employee ends employment with the county. Any employee who has an official hire date and begun work on or after November first twenty-twenty-three is ineligible to receive longevity payments. To determine longevity, the effective date for longevity is the employee's most recent full-time hire date of employment with the county. All records must be verified by the employee services department that involved any type of interrupt interrupted service. Longevity pay for eligible employees is based on a schedule outlined in section D of the ordinance notes of complete and uninterrupted years of service. A break in service will result in the loss of longevity pay if the right rehire day is on or after November first twenty-twenty-three. To be eligible for longevity payout, employee must still be employed on the day after his or her anniversary day. Election officials elected officials do not receive county longevity pay. Employees whose salaries are determined by state prescribed rule, order, guidelines or mandated do not receive county longevity pay. Probation officers would be an exception to this rule and would receive longevity. The annual longevity payment given to other county employees will not be given to correction center employees. Covered by the collective bargaining agreement as longevity is provided for by the consideration of the collective bargaining agreement. Prior years of service credit. Beginning January first twenty-seventeen, county council approved allowing complete years only prior years of service per each term of full-time. Monroe County Government Employment be applied when calculating the rehire of an employee's compensation step increase level. Months of service which are less than one full year shall not be counted nor combined to achieve a complete year of service. For example, an employee who worked for one year and three months shall be credited with one year of service. The council administrator and personnel administrator must verify all prior Monroe County Government service. With employee personnel records and or with a per report before being applied to the returning employee salary. The council administrator will notify the the elected official department head if the prior service credit total has been verified and granted. The council administrator will maintain a spreadsheet of employees with confirmed prior service credit for future use. Any additional information and or explanation of the Monroe County Government Salary Schedule and Compensation Policies included in this salary ordinance. For the purpose of clarification and transparency. Monroe County Council Policy Regarding Salaries Tied to State-Mandated Salaries. Annual salaries for the Monroe County Chief Public Defender, Chief Deputy Public Defender and the Monroe Circuit Court Commissioner. Are all tied and or related to the salaries mandated by the state of Indiana for the Monroe County Circuit Court Judges. Monroe County Prosecutor and or Monroe County Chief Deputy Prosecutor. The state mandated salaries are amended annually on July first. It is the intent and the direction of the Monroe County Council Council that all salaries paid by the Monroe County Council which are tied. And or related to the above-mentioned salaries mandated by the state of Indiana shall be automatically amended at the same time as the state mandated salaries. The Monroe County Council recognizes that this is an exception to the general rule for county set salaries which are generally modified on January first. Any uh pardon me, additional detail including defense service standard standard G, Supreme Court compensation information. I C thirty-three dash thirty-nine dash six dash five and thirty-six dash two dash three dash seventeen are incorporated by reference. Finally, Monroe County Youth Services Bureau, due to the requirement established by Indiana Administrative Code for Personnel. Employed at a child caring institution, the Binkley House Manager, the Prevention Court Attorney and Counselors employed at the Monroe County Youth Services Bureau. Will be compensated at a minimum of one-year salary for the PATC classifications. This compensation level meets the current minimum requirements for exempt employees pursuant to the Fair Labor Standards Act. The starting compensation level for these positions will be reviewed annually to ensure ongoing compliance with state and federal law and adjusted when necessary. All right, and that is read. Now, Ms. Turner King and Michelle, you've got more to add to that.
So correct, the uh the change that I would note for council is the addition of the paragraph on the Youth Services Bureau. Um we had discussed the need to adjust a few positions in Youth Service Bureau. That are the PATCs because they are exempt, but they will not meet the F L S A minimum for exempt employees come January first. Um council considered a few options, one of which was creating a separate grid for Y S B. Um we, Kim and I were able to sit down with Judge DeKoff and um the director and assistant director for Y S B. And what we noticed was the starting salary, the one-year salary in our grade for a PATC will meet the F L S A minimum. We also were able to discuss the requirements um that are imposed by Indiana Administrative Code for those positions. Which um often requires a master's degree and a certain um years of experience and so. One option to compensate the Y S B employees that are exempt at that F L S A minimum is to just. Start them at that one-year salary instead of creating a grid. And so we included this language in the salary ordinance um for council consideration. Obviously, if you don't want it there, we will go back to creating a grid, but this was a more simplistic solution that um. Only affects those five positions rather than a whole bunch of other positions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Turner King. Counselor McKim.
And just to clarify, only affects those who have less than one year of experience.
Yeah, so it would only impact those five positions, so I think it's three counselors, the Binkley House Manager and. Program coordinator. Program coordinator. Prevention coordinator. Um. If if one of them left today, we would start, which is not happening. Um that we would just start a new employee at the one-year salary rather than the base salary. But I think all but one of the employees um within those five are already beyond the one-year salary. And I think the individual who's not at the one-year salary was anticipated to hit the one-year salary next year. So it would just be bumping them up a couple of months early.
Okay, and then after one year, it's really, there's no difference. Great. That's clever.
It is clever.
A lot of clever going on tonight. That's awesome. All right, counselors, any other comments or questions? Counselor Huck?
But any new hire that we would advertise for would need to be advertised at the one-year amount.
Correct, yes.
Appreciate this problem solving. I know these are considerable things folks are dealing with. Any other questions or comments?
Um I just wanted to um. Just reference, there was no changes. Uh the ordinance kept referring to the ordinance notes. And that was just to bring things in from the Personnel Policy Handbook. Um so that it was, people wouldn't have to go, you know, digging and find looking for it. So there was no changes with regards to that that language in the notes section, so that all stayed the same.
Thank you.
But I did also want to show you, the departments were giving, were given the proposed grids. So, everyone has a copy of the proposed grids. Those, that does include the three point two percent COLA. And so, this, you know, has all of the classifications on there, and I do appreciate not having to create a special grid for five individuals in YSB. So, but here's the highway grid, you know, the hell, the sheriffs. The jail does not have the step increases, as you recall, and I'm just doing this for the public. Their step increase and longevity is added in with either, it's a forty, forty-eight cents on the hour, up to twenty years. So, they, they get an annual forty-eight cent increase. So, they don't have the step increases like everybody else does.
Per, per their bargaining agreement, right?
Yeah, for that. There's the SO positions, all of the SOs that we have did get the three point two percent. And again, they are not part of the step increases, so this is, they come as their department heads, you know, or boards see if they need that. So, but everything, but I also wanted to point out, per council, they also wanted the probation officers, the state had their COLA at three percent. On this grid, you will see, it says Monroe County Compensation, Compensation Schedule. This schedule for the probation officers includes the point two percent. So, I've worked with their department, and so, this is the grid for them for twenty twenty five. So, it does include that point two percent. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Michelle. Other questions? Yeah, Counselor Hahn.
Yes, when I, and this is an old discussion that we had several years ago, maybe before you all were born, but at any rate, when they, under the paragraph we're talking about, we all have to adhere to Personnel Policy, yada, yada. I think when, when the information goes out about there's this class available, that, that program available to review or to participate in, we need to make certain that we are letting that department head know, especially the elected, I'm speaking to the elected department heads, know whether or not it's going to be required or it's just something that's being offered. Because as you, as you all know, our departments are really, really pushed to get all of their required work done. And when they're, we see so many opportunities for people to do some additional education, but that does not mean that's required in order to receive a paycheck. And so, I think it's important that when somebody says, here's this course or whatever, that we, we know whether or not they have to do that in order to get a paycheck or they don't. It may, it may just be that the department heads are just not paying any attention to that anyway, and nobody's paying attention. I, I don't even know why it was put in there to begin with. It was several attorneys ago, but whatever. It was sort of to try to force everybody to take certain courses. And it, and you'd hear from the elected officials, we do not have time to spend a day and a half or, you know, whatever, every employee to do this. So, that, that's just my thought on it, and so.
Is, is that something you're seeing currently in, in this?
Well, it, when, when I first objected to it, then they changed it to say if it was fiscally related, whatever. It says it has to be in order for that to receive, it means if you receive your paycheck, you've got to do all that stuff on that list. See? And, and it's even underlined. So, they did change it around so that it would say it was only if it was state mandated or something, but. We can talk about this some other time.
I'm going to read it now.
Statement right here.
Because I'm just saying, we receive often opportunities for additional education, and for those employees who have the time to do it, awesome. But it, the elected officials should be able to choose whether or not there's that additional time, so that we're not paying overtime.
And I think that's reflected, the, the, it's all coming back to me now.
Right, right.
Yeah. But, yeah, it used to be that all payments were made, are contingent upon the strict compliance with the Personnel Policy Handbook, period. But we've narrowed that to just include, just make it contingent on strict compliance with certain things, benefits, compensation, fiscally related aspects, and then state and federally mandated requirements. So, yeah, we've, we've narrowed down.
Right, and I agree with that. I agree with that. It's just that, that there are those who think, oh, now we have to take such and such course, and that's not correct.
Right, I, I think your concern has been addressed by this clause, the clause as written.
Hopefully, all the department heads who have concerns understand.
Yeah, I, I will say this, I, I've never known many of our elected officials or department heads to blush at giving us input on things that work and don't work. So, if there's things that folks need to let us know, let us know.
Well, it wouldn't be us, because we don't, we don't mandate training.
No, but we hear about a lot of things that don't always fall under our bailiwick.
Right, but it would be the Office of the Commissioners, I think.
I, I pick up a lot of work for Commissioners too, Counselor. I do. I do. I'm not going to lie on, on that one. All right. Any other comments on this salary ordinance? One thing I wanted to say also, thanks to Michelle, Ms. Turner King, for all the things that got that to its completion. I've noticed that we've been closer to Jingle Bell Rock in previous years in looking at that than we are now, and provided this budget and salary ordinance hold out, we're not too bad a shape. Okay? All right, counselors. Well, let's go ahead and leave that and return to other business. I've got department heads here waiting to go. So, item eleven, and by the way, again, I'll return to, we are going to adopt potentially those budgets on October twenty eighth, twenty eighth. So, stay tuned on that. Okay, let's go to item eleven, a request from the probation department.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request to approve the amended job description and simultaneously amend the twenty twenty four salary ordinance and fund one thousand dash zero two two six County General Probation Account One fourteen two eight zero Office Administrator from a forty-hour PATB non-exempt to a forty-hour PATC non-exempt with an effective date of October twentieth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Which do you like?
Yours is fine, okay.
Thank you. Linda, welcome, Linda Brady, our Chief Probation Officer.
Thank you very much.
You got your hair cut.
I did get my hair cut. That's true.
Love it.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So, this is a job description update because there are new duties that have been given to our Office Administrator, mostly to do with the financial system, the new LOA system, the new claims process, the new way that payroll is submitted. In the past, we have not submitted our own payroll. It had gone to the courts to submit. So, now with the new system, we're doing our own payroll. So, she took on all of, all of that, plus managing twenty-eight budgets that we now have for the department. So, I updated the job description. It got sent to WIS from PAC. WIS made a recommendation to raise the classification level, I think by one level. It was a PATB, I believe WIS is recommending a PATC. So, I would request respectfully you to adopt WIS's recommendation and make that change.
Okay. Questions, comments from counsel? Counselor Hahn.
Yes, can you tell me when you submitted this? I, I, the reason why I'm saying that is I went through, and thank you, Ms. King, for sending the, the information that I asked for. I just saw it come through a few minutes ago, and with deadlines to turn things in between certain months, and then it was supposed to be for the following year. And so, are you aware that there is supposed to be a timeframe within which you're supposed to?
I know there used to be, and it's, it didn't seem like that has been happening lately.
Right, that's why I want to make sure, I'm not, I'm not faulting you, because you're, you're seeing what everybody else did, and that's why we have all of this happening so late in the day. But I just, I would just.
I know that, that there was in the past, and we would get emails saying, here's the due date and that sort of thing. But also, the, the changes that happened didn't happen on a calendar this year for her job. They happened to do with the changes that happened in the Auditor's Office, the changes with AOD, with the attendance on demand, and the, so the changes didn't happen on a schedule, they just happened.
Right, I, I mean, I understand that. I also know that it's not just your department it happened to. It happened to all of the departments. So, I mean, while I want to support this, I think we need to make sure that all of the departments are also compensated, because we were told this LOA was going to save so much time, going to be so easy, dah, dah, dah. And the only, it, it didn't save time for the departments, from what I'm being told. Is that correct?
Well, and for our department, it was new duties, so we formerly had a different, a different person who submitted our payroll.
Right. So. You hear that from all the departments.
Counselor Iverson.
Well, I just would like to remind the public that on page forty-six of today's packet, we have the information that you were referencing, the, the WIS letter back, moving this position from a PATB to a PATC in their rationale. So, we really appreciated having this come before PAC, and we had a really nice conversation. So, I think if folks are interested in litigating the past, they can go and watch that video.
All right. Other comments? We've got a recommendation here from WIS. Ms. Brady's presented it. Any other questions for her?
Right, to be clear, I wasn't trying to litigate anything. I was just trying to bring the information forward so that we'll either, in future, do what, what the rules say, or we throw those rules out and just say, we'll just, it doesn't matter, we don't. And I, and I understand why you did it, because the change happened mid-year, and because you saw everybody else lining up, and you would not be a very good department head if you weren't out there pushing for your people. And I appreciate that, I understand that.
Well, thank you. And, and I did see that she was doing a lot more work, and that, in fairness, I felt like I needed to do something about it.
Right, I get it.
All right. Questions for comments from counselors, I see? Let's do this, let's go to public comment. If you have public comments on this item, come forward to the Natty Hill and go to this table here, or raise your hand on teams, and I'll recognize you.
Do you see that, you did see the date changed? Did you read that into the record?
The date changed in the record, was that?
The date that I read was October twentieth, twenty twenty four. That was read into the record.
Thank you.
All right. Come on up here to this table.
Hello, my name is Joe Davis. I, I have a question. It's my understanding that the, the service of doing the, the previous salary work or compensation work was done by an outside third party? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so, what was the cost of that third party's service? And how does it equate to the increase in salary from the PATB to the PATC? It seems logical that if the third-party service was greater than the difference between PATC and PATB, then the public would be money ahead. Would that not be correct?
Well, we can take those comments under our consideration as we figure this out tonight. So, we, we appreciate that much. Did you have any other comments you wanted to make?
No, I, I don't, just this question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. President, just as a point of order, usually, we do not do a dialogue of back-and-forth with public. It's as we wish, we can either have the department head or as you, as Chair, choose to, either answer on the spot or provide the, the answers at a later time, just trying to be a little bit more efficient with.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, other public comments? If you've got any, raise your hand on teams or come forward to the Natty Hill. All right. Auditor's got a comment.
It's actually, if appropriate, a clarifying question, but I previously, these are completely new duties. Was, is it true that the courts were doing, handling payroll and claim submission previously? Yes. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood. I appreciate that.
Counselor McHem, you want to add?
Yeah, I actually, I will address the, the question raised by a member of the public because it's a legitimate, legitimate question. We do use a third-party compensation analyst called Wagner Erwin Shealy, we often call it WIS. But what they provide is kind of, is, is a neutral, unbiased analysis of position descriptions and a recommendation for classification. We don't always, we don't always accept their recommendation. It is just a recommendation, but what it does do is at least it gives us a neutral set of eyes. So, that's, it is valuable in and of itself, not just in the amount of the, you know, the question was, wouldn't we, if it was less than the amount of the raise, wouldn't, or more than the amount of the raise, rather, wouldn't we just be ahead to just give the raise? But, but the answer is that, you know, if we did that for one employee, then every single other employee, every department head would want a reclassification, want that, that raise for every other employee. So, having somebody to at least give us a neutral read on our position descriptions is, is of benefit to maintaining the entire county compensation system.
McHem, Counselor Iverson.
And I just want to, in, in full transparency, the actual verbatim letter that that organization provides is in today's packet. As previously stated, it is on page forty-six.
Seeing no further comments up here from counsel, let's go to a roll call vote on this item.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McHem?
Yes.
Counselor Hahn?
Yes.
Counselor Wilts?
Yes.
Counselor Munson? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Munson is not here. Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, let's move on to item B.
Excuse me, before you do that, I do have a clarifying question. So, Kim, is this effective?
Effective October twentieth was what was read into the motion.
Okay, okay. And, and then do I need to do anything as far as amending budgets for next year about this?
I'm going to ask them that once we take care of all of the WIS stuff.
Got it. Thank you, sorry about that.
All right, now we're at B, so we'll do the motion on B.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request to approve the new job description of data analysts, thirty-five hours, PATC exempt.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Ms. Brady.
So, I had submitted during our budget process for next year, the, a new position, and wrote a job description for a new position. And the position is really not for the probation department so much as it is for the government, county government. The local JRAC, which Kate Wilts talked about a little earlier, the Local Justice Reinvestment Advisory Council, is required, all ninety-two counties are required by Indiana law to have a local JRAC. We have statutory duties that we have to do, and since that law was enacted, so far, the statutory duties have been completed by myself, Becca Stripe, my deputy, and formerly Troy Hatfield, Deputy Chief, and now Anthony Williams, and.
And I wouldn't say we're doing an excellent job at it, it's a lot, because there are a lot of data points that we're supposed to be analyzing. And I, we came to the conclusion with talking to some consultants who are working with us, that if we're going to move this project forward in this county, we really need a, a position to be responsible for gathering the data, publishing the data, and working with the, the local J-RAC. We did pull that request from our budget, because we were hoping that we'll find another way to fund the position for the next year. So, we're still hopeful that we'll find a way to fund it. But what I'd like to do is go ahead and have the job description approved, so that when we hopefully, knock on wood, we're able to find the money, we can move towards hiring somebody and, and having an employee for our local J-RAC to move this, this project forward as were required by law. And when I say we, the, the county is required, but there are statutory members that are, I'll just, a few that come to my mind are, you have to have a judge, county council, county commissioner, the sheriff, prosecuting attorney, public defender, chief probation officer, mental health, local mental health. So, those are a few of the statutory members for the local J-RAC.
Comments, Counselor Iverson?
Well, first of all, this was factored by WIS, so we do have that in case, and when that comes to it. And the job description's in today's packet as well. Uh, but I wanted to talk about how excited I am for this position. Uh, when, when we talk about your department and the wonderful data that's come out of your department, it's really nice to see, you know, what are the trends, what are the demographics, and, and what exactly is happening? And this position is just going to be so helpful to continue that trend. I'm really excited for this to come online, really excited for all the things that Counselor Wiltz was talking about. And this is just such a great move for our, our community, and I can't wait for you to come back and tell us you found the money.
I, I hope, thank you, I, I hope I'm successful.
I know you will be.
Other comments, Counselor Wiltz?
I, I just want to make sure that I've said out loud how much I support this position and funding it somehow. And I do think that, of note, is that this position will be beneficial to the justice system, which is across different agencies and offices within county government. This is, this is long overdue, and I, I'm looking forward to supporting this and seeing it filled.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions or comments from council, we'll go to public comments. If you've got public comments on this eleven B, I believe it is, you can come forward here in the NatU Hill to the table, or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, let's go to item twelve, a request from Employee Services.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brady.
Counsel, I move to approve the Employee Services Department request to approve the new and amended job descriptions, and simultaneously amend the twenty-twenty-four salary ordinance and fund one thousand dash zero-three-zero-nine County General HR account line fifteen-one-one-six from Personnel Administrator PAT D, exempt to HR Director, exempt A.
EXC.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, EXCA. I'm losing it today. Um, exempt account line ten zero-eight-nine from Employee Services Assistant, Comment C, non-exempt to HR Assistant Director, PAT D, non-exempt account line ten zero-two-four from Payroll Administrator to Payroll Administrator Compensation and Compliance, no classification change, and the creation of a new account line and position, ten zero-eight-eight, Payroll Administrator Attendance and Benefits, forty hours, PAT C, non-exempt, with all an effective date of October twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. All right, we've got a motion in a second, I want to welcome Easton Stein to our podium.
Good evening, so I think this is going to be a common theme from departments tonight, talking about some of these topics. So, for me, I just want to give you, we're doing a little bit of restructuring, and just want to give you a history of where that's coming from. So, HR duties are typically, have been handled by auditor's offices. And we, before my time, created our own HR department to take on those duties. And at the time, that department consisted of two full-time employees and one part-time person. And then a little bit later on, we scaled that back down to one person in HR, and added payroll under the HR umbrella. Um, and those duties were also absorbed by that office. Um, those duties are typically handled by the auditor's office. And so, many counties have established their own HR departments, and they've taken on the HR duties, as well as some other responsibilities. We're a little unique in that we take on payroll as well. But for us, integrating those two things really helps us be a little bit more efficient. Uh, so, um, getting back to where we're at now, the proposal for this is to restructure our office so that we better support the growing needs of Monroe County and its employees. We have over eight hundred employees being served by currently three people. So, the restructuring includes moving the Personnel Administrator to HR Director to focus on strategic initiatives, and then moving the Employee Services Assistant to Assistant HR Director to handle day-to-day HR activities. Um, and then keeping one payroll person the same, adding a second payroll person to really focus on, what I would say, auditing and compliance with benefits, because we've added a lot of new benefit programs over the past couple of years. And so, we really need to make sure those are being, um, we need to monitor those and make sure they're being handled appropriately. And we think that this will really help us to be able to serve employees a little bit better, help departments managing things a little bit more efficiently.
Thank you very much. Let's go to comments, Counselor Iverson.
Well, thank you for coming here tonight. Uh, again, all of the factoring that Wagner Erwin Shealy did begins in today's packet on page sixty-three. Uh, I personally am very much in favor of this reorganization. Uh, first of all, I don't know how many times I have sent something to the former, or the Personnel Administrator, saying, what if we did this, what if we did this, oh, hey, look at what's happening over here? And the inundation of that office has been such that you just couldn't get around to any of those things. Now that we've got this, this great training program, now that we've got so many more employees, I mean, it just, this reorganization makes a lot of sense as our county government is growing and changing. So, I'm in favor of this reorganization.
Thank you very much.
Other council comments, Counselor McKim?
I mean, I'm in favor in principle. Um, I do think it's pretty absurd how under-resourced we are in the county, in county government with respect to HR. That, that, uh, that's for sure. Um, how much of, I mean, it's, it's a budgetary impact that I'm really concerned with. Uh, this is, uh, how much of this, of these changes are already included in the budget that we've already read into the record?
They're not.
So, none of it, including the new position?
Right, um, I do have, I, I did the twenty-twenty-five fiscal impacts with regards to these, and I have a presentation later for that, or you, I can pull it up now, so.
Oh, I think it's relevant.
I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm, for most of the other changes here, uh, that we're talking about, like a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars here, three thousand dollars there, but the, here, it looks like we're talking a hundred thousand, more than a hundred thousand dollars, which is a major increase to the budget. And I guess, I would like to know what, as a council, we could cut to make up for that?
Counselor, I, I have a list here of counselors. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, no, you're, you, go ahead, you're right, that is a, it is budget discussion. It's, I, like I said, I support the reorgan principle, but.
Let me run down the list of counselors I've got to make comments, and we can certainly come back to that. Uh, Counselor Hawke was next.
Uh, yes, indeed, it is a budget question, and that's, um, everything that goes through PAC and then is sent on to county council, it is still a budget question. Because at PAC, our, our responsibility is not to, um, discuss the budget, because that's a part of the entire council. But it seems to me that, um, there's a very real reason why the, the rules about PAC is you're supposed to do this early on, so that we can look at all of these proposed changes in total way before this budget starts, before we get to where we are now. Um, and so, of all people who would know that.
You're absolutely right, I do not take, I do not take offense to that comment at all.
Right, and, and, but I, I, once again, I'm saying I understand why department heads would do it, because they see everyone else lined up, and so they're going to get in the line too, oh, you know, free food over here, so let's go. I, I'm just saying, this is not the way we should be doing it. And, of course, I still, I'm old school, I still think the auditor should be over payroll.
That's why I put that information in there, yeah.
You heard me say that at every meeting, that's the way county government's set up. Payroll's supposed to be under the auditor. And that way, if you need a backup person, you've got more people in your department to, to work and cross-train and be the backup. And, and so, we are growing the HR department in ways that really should be growing in the auditor's office. And that's no surprise for the auditor to hear me say this, because I said it to the other auditor, so, uh, I haven't changed my tune.
All right, next up, I have Counselor Crossley.
Um, okay, so, kind of lost my train of thought right there. Um, I'm new school, um, so, I will say that I, I definitely think, like, thank you for the, uh, history lesson on that, because I, I always was kind of curious as to why we just never really had an official HR director. And I appreciate the work that you are doing, and I definitely, um, you know, support that. As you said, we have over eight hundred employees, and there's only three of y'all in the office. It definitely is a lot of work, that I would think that this change would definitely be commendable and, and would help as well. Um, I am interested, though, in what Counselor McKim was saying in terms of what we can see. Um, but I definitely think if we're going to argue for other department heads, um, for this particular, or like, other, you know, job description changes and whatnot, this is definitely one that we should try to go to bat for as well, so, I'll support it, thank you.
So, process question, just real quick, and before I return to the list, I just want to make sure I understand this. If we, if we adopt a change, we still have to fund a change through a budget or additional proj, somewhere along the line? So, there, there may-
And salary ordinance.
And a salary ordinance, so there's two different, three or four different questions. Okay, all right, I'll stop talking. Counselor Wiltz was next.
Yes, um, I'm changing the question, I have a new question in my head. And that is, um, about the advantages that Counselor Hawke mentioned of having things housed within the auditor's office, and that allowing for backup. And I know that there's been cross-training and discussions of backup and all that. So, could you just tell us how that concept is addressed in your office?
Currently?
Currently, yes.
Yes, currently, we have, um, I handle HR duties, we have a payroll person who does only payroll, and we have an assistant who splits their time between both of those things, which we came to last year asking for that assistant position. And over the course of that person working here and us having that position, we realized how very difficult it is for them to split their time between payroll and HR, because they're very different, um, they have different deadlines and very different time constraints. Payroll is very focused, and it needs to be, um, there's a lot of attention to detail and things that, which, then if you're pivoting between HR and payroll things, it's a little difficult to, to focus, um, on the things, the task at hand, I think. And so, that's why I'm presenting this option to have a full-time payroll backup, because we are not able to get to auditing, um, in real time, which helps the auditor's office when they get to auditing the things that they need to do annually. Um, so I think that's some, there's some give and take there. Um, I think even if these payroll positions were positioned in the auditor's office, it would still require two people to do that effectively, which I think you will hear the same thing from the auditor's office later on.
Oh, my gosh, what a night. Um, okay, so, currently, you have one person who provides backup to you and the payroll.
I think a half a person, yeah, essentially.
A half, exactly, got it, thank you.
I'll go to Bree, and then I'm going to go to Counselor McKim.
I'd just like to speak in support. Um, it's really important to ensure that we have adequate personnel to, and, to make sure we are following best practices, and we can separate duties, cross-train, all the things we need to do in order to make sure we're serving, you know, the customers internally and externally. So, serving the public and also, you know, the employees here. So, in order to do that, we just, wherever the duties are housed, we need to be properly staffed, so, thank you.
Counselor McKim?
I mean, I don't disagree with any of that, and I mean, I will support the creation of these positions, but I'm not guaranteeing that I will support funding of that, of the, of the new position, unless we can come up with some other cuts to, to pay for it. So, I, I, I feel like we're right at the top of where I think we should be budget-wise, and we're not, we are not in a position to be adding a hundred thousand dollars of, of new expenses, in, in my opinion. So, uh, like I said, I will, I will, I will vote, I, I think this is a good reorganization, but I'm not yet there with adding a brand-new position without coming up with some other kinds of cuts. My colleagues may disagree.
Well, it sounds like we've got some additional considerations on that as well. Counselor Hawke?
I know a couple of years ago, um, when I said, look, you know, we really need to have more than just one person who knows how to do payroll, we need to make sure we do cross-training, we need to do backup. I mean, my goodness, the one thing we cannot miss out is we've got to pay people, and we have to pay it on time. So, at the time, it was, well, we've got people in the auditor's office who are cross-training. So, is that still going on or not?
Are you?
Cross-training with payroll.
Oh, no, that is no longer happening in the auditor's office. We're concentrating on claims, and payroll is exclusively housed in HR currently.
And, and, so therefore, then, once again, I have concern about internal control, because HR is under county commissioners, and county commissioners are the one who approves payroll. And so, that's the reason why payroll's supposed to be in the auditor's office. And I understand nobody else wants to agree with me, and that's fine. But I just have to say that's the way, and you'll not find, go ahead, ask the other county councils throughout the state, who does the payroll? It's the auditor's office. And they do the salary ordinance too.
Thank you, Counselor Hawke. Uh, before I go to Counselor Iverson, I, I, I just want to know a lot. Um, our conversation seems to be kind of, we're heading into kind of a circle here of, I'm not sure where that circle's heading, but we got a long agenda. Uh, and I'd like to see more get done than less, even if that means more is not adopting or adopting. Um, one of the things that I'll offer is, I recall historically, when we had in Long-Term Finance Committee members, it was this year, when we had the, uh, Friday payroll issue that occurred. Here's what I vividly remember from that. The folks in Human Resources, am I saying, I'm saying it correctly? Human Resources was with us, with the auditor's office in, in that limbo, and with the council staff trying to figure that out on the fly, because nobody at that time, who was a county employee, gave a rat's you-know-what about the details of who was doing what, when and where. They wanted that pay.
Yeah.
And as I recall, it was employee, it was H, H, HR that was having the most visible, pardon me, heart attacks on making sure that got done, and- pardon me, heart attacks on making sure that got done and updating and staying on that and that process and kind of coordinating with that. That was a contrast to about two years ago when we were looking to add those supplementals for employee pay. And I recall at that time, the then department was struggling to kind of figure out how you might do that if you didn't do it on the court or didn't do it this on this. And there does seem to be a nimbleness towards our county employees that is happening as the professionalization of that department's happening. I think more of that rather than less. What I'd love to see us do is figure out a way to pay for it per Counselor McKim's extremely well put points. And I think that's a secondary question beyond that. But I do think, and I think we got to figure that out. I think we can figure it out, but I, I, I do, I want to point that out because when we were doing that supplemental again, more towards Christmas than not, or the holidays than not, we struggled mightily and we were limited in that department. That seems to has changed dramatically. Even on down to the, they're handling, my gosh, the United Way campaign now, which I do think should be handled in that office if anyone did. Okay? Other discussion items on this before we maybe put this to the public and then just see how we dispense with this item. You sure, Counselor Iverson?
Yeah, I was just going to talk about the fiscal impact some more, but I think that your, your direction is wise. We've got a lot more on our agenda tonight.
Okay. All right. Well, let's, if you have a public comment, members of the public have a comment on this. Come forward here in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams.
Hello. My name is Joe Davis. As a member of the public, I'm very concerned about the increases in the category 15116, Personnel Administrator being reclassified to the new HR Director under 15116. At a roughly ten thousand dollar increase. And also the item number 10089, Employee Services Assistant, being reclassified as HR Assistant Director with an almost twenty thousand dollar increase in salary. And at the same time, the asking for a new position of funding, which would be anywhere from fifty-five to seventy-one thousand dollars. It seems like this new position is actually lessening the burden of the, of the two administrators. And one would think that maybe their salaries should remain at the status quo as opposed to, as opposed to such an increase. It's, I'm not following the logic. I agree with Counselor McKim that this is pretty dramatic. And we need to have more details as to what, what the service is truly about and where the public benefit is. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Other public comments? Raise your hand on teams or come forward. All right. So we'll go back to councils. If there's no other further council comments at this point, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk? Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Will?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed five to one and will need to come back for a second reading because of the salary ordinance.
All right. Let's move on to item thirteen, which is a request from the Recorders Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Recorder's request to approve the new job description and simultaneously amend the 2024 salary ordinance and fund 1,000 dash zero 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 four County General Recorder Account Line 10-149 from Recorder Deputy 35 hours, Comment B, non-exempt to Senior Recorder Deputy 35 hours, Comment C, non-exempt with an effective date of October twentieth, 2024.
Second.
Welcome Amy Swain, our Monroe County Recorder.
Hello, everyone. This is a reclassification of an existing position. We have an employee currently doing some of these additional duties, including daily reporting, posting and cash reconciliation. The additional duties are due to changes in the two-step process with our financial system and our timekeeping system. This is not a new position. No additional appropriation is needed. And there will be no change to the 2025 budget that I submitted due to the retirement of a longtime county employee, which will more than cover the difference. It has been through the process, been to PAC, been to WIS, come back to PAC. And so now I'm asking the full council to approve the recommendations by WIS and by PAC.
All right. Comments, questions from counsel? Counselor Iverson?
For those watching, if you'd like to see the documents that were just referenced by our recorder, it's on page eighty-nine of our packet. So yeah, we've been through the process.
Thank you. This, this, no additional cost to us now in the future on the budget, at least at this point. Recorder's now the officially the most popular county official since Nat U Hill. Thank you. It's Amy Swain, folks.
Try and make it easy.
SWAI. All right. We need, we need a little laughter. Thank you. Other counselor comments? All right. Let's go to public comments. If you have them, come forward in the Nat U Hill to the podium or raise your hand on teams. All right. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And thanks for waiting with us tonight. Item fourteen is the Auditor's Department and another job description request.
Uh, okay. Counsel, I move to open, counsel, I open for discussion and consideration for the approval of the auditor's request to amend the job descriptions for the Accounts Payable Administrator and the Assistant County Financial Administrator. The auditor is also requesting to change the titles and amend the classifications above Wagner, Irwin and Cheeley. WIS's recommendation to amend the 2024 salary ordinance and fund 1,000 dash zero 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 two County General Auditor as follows. Account Line 10016 from Accounts Payable Administrator PAT B to Accounts Payable Director PAT C and Account Line 10017 from Assistant County Financial Director PAT A to Accounts Payable Financial Administrator PAT B with an effective date of October twentieth, 2024.
Second.
All right.
What point of information, Mr. Shink? Does this also include a salary ordinance amendment? Or is this just the, because I didn't hear the word salary ordinance and it's not written on the agenda. So I.
And amend the salary ordinance.
So you are attempting to amend the salary ordinance here?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, the motion.
Yeah, but it was read in the motion.
Yeah, the motion amends the 2024 salary ordinance.
The motion was just opening a discussion.
Right. Exactly. That's what I'm saying.
It wasn't really a motion. Right?
Right.
I just want to make sure I understand what we're, yeah, why, why are we moving to open for discussion? Is it, is, are we moving to, sorry, I don't mean to be a jerk here.
Let's do this.
I want to make it clear what we're trying to do.
Let's reread the motion just to make sure that we're all on the same page. And if we need to amend that or interpret that in a different way, we'll figure it out.
Well, okay. So my idea was when I typed this was to approve the job descriptions because my understanding is the job descriptions are correct. And that the auditor would like to have the salary ordinance amended with the recommendations that she's making, which was read with the changes of the different classifications and the job titles.
So Crossley.
So it's.
You know, why don't, just make it all a motion and then somebody can move to amend it or deny, vote it all down or.
Yeah.
Okay.
So let's reread the motion we have and see what that is and then we can go from there.
Motion. Okay. We are all learning something new. Okay, counsel. I, oh, it's fine. I motion for the appro, the approval of the auditor's request to amend the job descriptions for the Account Payable Administrator and the Assistant County Financial Administrator. The auditor is also requesting to change the titles and amend the classifications above Wagner, Irwin and Cheeley. WIS's recommendations and amend the 2024 salary ordinance and fund 1,000 dash zero 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 two County General Auditor as follows. Account Line 10016 from Accounts Payable Administrator PAT B to Accounts Payable Director PAT C and Account Line 10017 from Assistant County Director, Assistant County Financial Director PAT A to Accounts Payable Financial Administrator PAT B with an effective date of October twentieth, 2024.
Second.
And counselors, I will offer if anyone wishes to amend, change, modify, any way we need to do to, to make sense of this, we can. So maybe contemplate that for a second. We do have the auditor with us very much and invite her to speak on this.
Great. Thank you, counsel. So this is a request for consideration of reclassification of these two positions and acceptance of the job descriptions as written and job title amendment. So bring this forward to you today. We received the recommendations back from WIS and reviewed those closely and did some research with regard to those and classifications with similar positions throughout the county. In doing that, we found and prepared for you a response to the WIS recommendations, which you all should have received in your email. We also have physical copies if you'd like that. Anyhow, with review and looking at other positions that are very similar, specifically we're kind of mirroring the HR model where we will have a claims, we do have a claims administrator. And then essentially the backup, but somebody that can, you know, a similar role that can take over that process and assist with that day-to-day as well. Just the positions are very similar and is where we're, you know, instead of processing payroll or processing claims, we still, you know, have duties with regard to, you know, 1099s and processing tax forms. It's all very similar. I am going to pass off to Carly here, the Financial Director, to talk in a little bit more detail.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. So in the letter that we emailed, I believe it was last week, it's a four-page letter that I address, addresses step-by-step kind of our take on the WIS recommendation and where we disagree with their recommendation. As we know, WIS addresses, they review titles on a case-by-case scenario. They don't review them countywide. So we provided a grid of the departments that are processing claims. So the departments that are obtaining guidance, direction, asking questions to the people in our departments. And whenever we put that grid together, we saw that most of those positions were paid at a PAT B or higher. Our employees are providing guidance, both with claims and as a whole, financial guidance to people that are in financial manager roles, people who are directors of departments, just as a whole, individuals that are paid at a PAT B or higher. So our view of that is that these employees who are expected to have an all-encompassing knowledge of the financial processes, those should be able to be paid at a higher rate than the ones that they are providing that guidance to.
So can I ask you a clarifying, clarifying question? Make sure I understand that right. Individuals in your office are a PAT C, I believe it is?
They're at a PAT A and a PAT B. We are requesting for them to be at a PAT B and a PAT C.
And they're providing guidance to individuals asking for them resource knowledge or questions who are at that higher level. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I want to make sure I understood that. Yes. Counselor Iverson?
I want to thank the Auditor's Department for their four-page memo and for coming to the PAC meeting to explain this. Just for clarity here, the, when PAC reviewed this, we thought it best to bring it to council for the entire council to review this. And in, in large part because of its fiscal impact. We, we viewed this as having a fiscal component to it that PAC shouldn't just rely on. And of course, in today's packet, you find the WIS factoring as well as the job descriptions and the fiscal impact is on page one hundred and twelve, which goes through some of the impact that our office has delineated. I'll leave it there for now and give further comment later.
Thank you, Counselor Iverson. Other comments or questions from counsel? Counselor Hawk, Counselor McKim?
I hate to get into the, the fiscal aspects already, but I, can, can you pay for this with the existing, with the existing 2025 budget? Or figure out how to move things around to make it work? Or would we actually have to increase the 2025 budget?
They're requesting it to be effective October twentieth.
And if you need time to answer that, you can always tell us that too, but it is an important question.
No, it is an important question. It can certainly be covered for 2024. And I believe that we will have enough room to also cover that with category transfers in 2025. It would be close, but I think we can do it.
Horse trading here. Okay.
I appreciate you answering that in that way. Other counselor comments or questions? Counselor Hawk?
Two things. One, this request was turned in much later than what the rules say. And of all people who should know this, it should be the auditor's office and HR. So for that reason alone, I have some problems, which I discussed that, saying we need to all get on the same page. Either we have a rule or we don't. But in addition to which, WIS laid out pretty definitively why they thought that this was, I mean, it's all right with them to change the description, but they did not think that, that the classification should be changed from a PAT B to a PAT C and so forth. And the other thing that I'd had, and I've mentioned this before, we have a lot of different financial directors. And, and I think we need to look at that as a whole because, you know, the financial director looking at all of the grants and so forth, like in the highway, that's, that, that job description and classification, it seemed to me, should be a great deal more because the responsibility, not just more work, but the responsibility and the complexity of it. So I think that's something that we ought to look across, across the county on. So for those reasons, I, I will not be supporting this.
Auditor, did you have some, some information there?
Sure. If I may just respond, I do want to clarify that my office and specifically these positions are providing guidance like to all financial managers within the county. We are not just supporting the auditor's office. We are supporting the county with regard to processes, procedures, guidance, training, et cetera. With all due respect, WIS missed the mark on this. It's just not correct. We provided evidence to that in the packet we provided.
Thank you. Counselor McKim?
Yeah, and I, I, I will agree with Counselor Hawk, particularly on the highway position. I think they probably missed the mark on the highway position as well. That's probably under, under classified. But I, I also, I also see your point, the auditor's point, that this position is providing and should be the, the expert on these financial.
It should be the auditor.
Well, but that, but this position is the one that is providing expert guidance to all these other positions. And it is a little bit weird that they would be classified no higher than, in some cases, lower than those that they're providing guidance to.
Counselor Crossley, and then I'll go to Wilt.
Thank you. I was just gonna say, like, we just added another financial, like, director position. So I don't think that, like, if people are coming to your office, um, and then they, they get educated and then they go about their way. You're the revolving door of where that goes. And I, I think we have to make sure that we are adequately paying folks what they, um, are, are, are needed, um, as well. So that's, that's one. So two, I support it. Three, the other problem is it seems to be that other offices as well tend to disagree with WIS's recommendations. Um, and in talking over this a lot and just kind of thinking about this, I guess, I, I, I don't know if this is like a PAC thing where, you know, folks can do it in PAC or this can be a larger council discussion, but it seems to be that I, I think that maybe we can have some type of rubric kind of thing where there is something that comes back to full council. If WIS doesn't recommend for whatever reason, um, and a department head tends to disagree with that particular decision of WIS recommendations. And the department head is doing their fair share and going to bat for, um, their department, which I would think that they would want to do. And they bring it back to the council. I just think that there needs to be some type of, like, override procedure or some type of something, um, policy put in play where, you know, people could come back to, you know, maybe they can come back to council, um, as a whole, because it has a financial impact, so to speak. And as we are the fiscal body here, um, we can, you know, maybe put that into play. But again, I just say that because we've seen the clerk's office, we've seen the assessor's office, we've seen now the auditor's office. We definitely know the health department, um, has had, you know, their fair share of complaints of recommendations and, and that can be a conversation for another day. But that being said, I just think that as we are thinking about and going through all of these approvals and this, you know, department head explaining what is happening with WIS and why she disagrees with it. I just would love to see council or maybe PAC again. Not sure who should take that and into their purview, but I would really like to see some type of override review of some sort to come to somebody.
Jeff? I hear you.
Thank you, Counselor Crossley. Counselor Wilt?
Well, I wanted to pick up on Counselor McKim's point about the, that it's kind of weird that someone would be at one, at one level and then training and guiding, folks at, who might be at that level or higher. Because I pushed back on that argument when, um, when we were talking this afternoon and I was kind of getting more information from the auditor and, um, they made a really good point that it's not just about the, the money and compensation, but there's a level of respect and, um, the need to be listened to as an authority that is undermined when the, your, your position isn't categorized in the same, at the same level or higher. And that was compelling to me. Um, and for that reason, I will support this change.
Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Iverson?
Yeah, you know, with, with these sorts of things where we're questioning, uh, what WIS brings back, I just have a, a quick question for council administrator. Uh, I think this, the issue before us in no way goes outside of the no kind of job classification, does it?
No, it, it, no, it stays within our grids. It's not, um, anything like an SO or anything like that. Nope.
Excellent. And I, I think that's, that's really important that we preserve that system and that we honor that system. And I think the, the auditor first thing within that system.
Well, one item to know, I, I, I do want to offer this and Counselor McKim said it very well earlier. A WIS recommendation is a recommendation and that and other considerations of this body go into figuring this out. And this is a very imperfect system that I hope is fair than, than days, in, in days past, but it's always a work in progress. One thing I will know is we have had times, and I'm not commenting on this one. I'm still getting my head around what the auditor said. And I appreciate very much what she has done to bring this to councilors, uh, in the last few days particularly. But we have had times in times past where the WIS recommendation or process didn't exactly give us what we had to do to figure it out from here back home. And they're not here, but they are hired to do a service and, and, and for the most part it gets done. But I recall in a couple of years back, we engaged them to do an entire reclassification study and system. And the result of that was beginning last fall of last year into this year, councilors here spent a dramatic amount of time downstairs with the assessor's office figuring what happened because apparently that entire effort not only missed the boat, couldn't find a dock and was landlocked. And we spent forever, Counselor Hawk, myself, Counselor Iverson, I think at one point was living down there in the office. And I'm, I'm not being dramatic, but I went down myself and talked to those employees and it was not a pretty sight. Now somehow we, they, she, her, them, all, everybody missed that process that we paid council, 100,000 plus in a budgeted process. And I'm not pointing fingers anywhere, but it just was what it was and we had to go fix that. Um, in that discussion, what I do vividly recall is this. Sometimes WIS discussions about things like GIS and other specialists made it sound like sometimes when I talk about technology or the internet, right? The old Ted Stevens internets, tubes, series of tubes. There were some of that that was coming out. And look, I'm not knocking on WIS. I'm just saying that sometimes we have to look at it and figure it out from there. Um, and so WIS is not infallible. There are times they give us a recommendation, we got to figure it out with that. Now, one thing is, councilors, if there's more information that we need, additional time, I'm open to that. And we'll follow the will of the council. I know the auditor's been very good as well as our staff, but not only advocating for this, but trying to answer these questions as we figure this out. Yes, Counselor McKim?
I guess I, I do think somehow we need, we, which means y'all, not, not me, needs to, uh, get, wrap our hands around this, uh, financial, uh, manager situation. And I, I, I don't, you know,
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm inclined to support this request here, especially when I learned that the auditor is going to make an attempt to not in, not have to increase the budget. But I do think that, um, you know, I don't, for example, want this to mean that, oh, we just let the highway department languish. Uh, we, we need to look at these positions, even though they may have recently been reclassified to make sure that we're applying the standards, uh, i- i- in a, you know, in an equal manner. So I, I think that's going to be a task for you all over the next, over the next year.
And we have tackled some tough tasks in the last year or so, so I don't see this as insurmountable. We did figure out the assessor issue, uh, which was not easy for anyone. Other council comments on this? All right, I see none. Let's go to public comment on the item. You have comments from the public. Come forward in the NatU Hill to the, the table or the podium or raise your hand on teams. All right. Seeing none. Uh, we will go to a roll call vote on this item.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
No.
Kim?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one. Will need to return for a second reading.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think that clears this from item 14. Let's go to item 15.
Counsel, I move to approve the Monroe County Public Library's request for an additional appropriation and Fund 0061 rainy day and the amount of $500,000 in the personnel category.
Second.
All right, um, we have someone from the library here.
Did earlier.
We did. We may have. Scared them to death. Yes, we're not normally that bad. I apologize. We're getting that way. Let's do this. Let's hold this one if we can, councilors, unanimous consent to hold it. And then we'll come back around to it by the end of the, uh, session, just to figure out what we need to figure out. Let's move on then. Two items, 16, which is.
Yes, go ahead.
Just a point, a point of information here. Is this a topic that I usually recuse myself on?
You're talking about 16?
Yes, for the legal.
Yep.
Yeah, relegation.
Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna stand out there. Somebody like give me a signal when you're done.
All right. We're on, we'll go to item 16 as soon as Counselor McKim clears the chamber. Okay. All right.
Counsel, I move to approve the legal department's request for an additional appropriations and Fund 1000-0277 County General Legal and the amount of $4,000 in the personnel category and $36,000 in the services category for a total appropriation of $40,000.
Second.
Right. And to speak on this, pardon me, uh, Dave Schilling, County Legal? No, it's Molly Turner King playing the part. All right, jump in this team.
Um, so, uh, first I'm going to give some background on the additional appropriation request. Um, the legal department budget has three lines relating to litigation. The first line is titled litigation. Historically, at budget time, the council appropriates $1,000 for that line. In the past, the litigation line was used exclusively for, um, deposition expenses, which happen very rarely. The second line is titled litigation deduction. That line is used to pay the county's $15,000 deduction on cases litigated by insurance defense. Um, counsel, since Jeff McKim was council president at budget time, $30,000 had been appropriated for that line. Prior to Jeff's, um, presidency, $50,000 was appropriated for that line. The third line is titled claim settlement. Historically, at budget time, $332 was appropriated to that line because all lines are located in the same budget category. We, we do category transfers, um, when necessary to pay the claims. In recent years, those original appropriations have not been sufficient. Due to the Huff and Houston South cases and to sheriff's cases, it has been necessary to seek additional appropriations for those lines. Sorry. Legal fees from the Huff and Houston South cases have been and are paid from the litigation line. Deductible amounts arising from the sheriff's cases have been and are paid from the litigation deduction line. And the $25,000 settlement from one of the Huff cases and the $28,000 settlement from the GIFT case were paid from the settlement line. For the years of 2020, 2021, 2022, the legal department sought and received an average of $69,000 per year in total additional appropriations for those lines. For the 2025 legal budget, we requested and were granted $30,000 for each of, each of those three lines. At this time in our 2024 budget, we have $4,042.72 in the litigation line, $333.07 in the litigation deduction line and $332 in the claim settlement line. We have received bills from U-Banks, which is the Houston South case, in the amount of $16,506.30, which have not been paid. U-Banks estimates that they will bill the county an additional $10,000 more in fees before the end of the year. The Seventh Circuit has not ordered the parties to submit a briefing schedule in the Huff federal court case. If it does, we will be facing additional fee bills before the end of the year, which will be substantial. That is why we are requesting a $40,000 additional appropriation.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Turner King. Counselor Iverson?
Uh, I, I think anybody that's been following these lines in the past know that the Houston South, uh, litigation is very important. It's not only this council, but I might go out on a limb and say the county commissioners, uh, it's very important that Monroe County is part of this, uh, to protect not only our natural spaces, but our drinking water. And the other two cases noted, I think are important for us to maintain as well. And those are the reasons why I am supportive of this additional appropriation.
Other council comments? Counsel Wilt?
I will just say as the liaison to the legal department, um, this explanation answers all of the questions I had asked.
All your questions?
Well, most of them, yeah. I can always think of more. You know I can. Um, no, I appreciate, I appreciate that because that is exactly what I had asked about was, you know, could you outline sort of why the need and what the need and that kind of thing? So I appreciate that. And, um, agree with the Houston South support.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Wilt. I will offer just a one last comment. I think over the years, it's been a little bit narrated about, well, legal costs and Houston South and all that. And the thing that I always come back to, I think I said this even before, some councilors may have been on here. So now I'm, I'm becoming a more senior member here, but, um,
President.
The price of not getting water quality right would make $40,000 look like 25 cents we lost out on that sidewalk outside the courthouse. For a family incurring any sort of unmentionable due to drinking water quality change, that 40,000 would be a trip through the ER for about two hours. And I'm, I'm wildly guessing on numbers here, but I just, I always come back to that. And so anyway, it doesn't need to be narrated further, but we got to keep at it. Any further comments? All right, let's go to public comment on the item then. If you have public comment, come forward here in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on teams.
Hello, uh, Joe Davis here. I fully support this additional appropriation for the legal department as I have a feeling there's more litigation on the horizon and I wish them to be adequately prepared. Better safe than sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further public comment? None on teams, none in the room. Let's go ahead to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
I'd like to note that Counselor Hawk left the middle of the, the meeting and Counselor McKim is not in the meeting. So the motion passes four to zero.
All right. We're gonna recess for like a minute while I grab Counselor McKim back in. Uh, we'll be in recess because the minute a counselor moves up here, we break quorum. So just recess for one second.
Are we muted? We are. We can speak freely. I was shocked that you didn't have any more questions. You always have questions.
Question. I've already come up with three.
It's too late. We voted unanimously.
News that we're done?
Yeah, we voted on everything.
All right, we're gonna move on to, yes, counselor.
Is somebody going to call, try to call Gary from the library? Do we have?
I don't have a number or anything.
The good news is we have about 10 more items to go. And so as long as he's here within the next 15 years, he should be okay. Item 17 is a request from the Health Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for creation of new account lines and Fund 9154-9624 HIV Prevention Grant as outlined on the agenda and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation to $31,100 in the personnel category.
Second.
Okay. And.
He's on.
All right, we've got Lori Kelly with us from the Health Department. Ms. Kelly?
Uh, good evening, councilors. Uh, so this is grant funding that was awarded from the Indiana Department of Health. Uh, so there was a delay, um, in our grant cycle with our harm reduction, with the funding that supports our harm reduction specialist position. Uh, so they provided this gap funding, um, while we were waiting for the new grant, uh, to come to us.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. We'll go to questions, uh, from councilors or comments. To my left, I'm looking, no, to my right. Okay. Let's go to public comment on the item. If you have public comment, come forward in the NatU Hill room or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, let's go to item B, please.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for the creation of new account lines and Fund 8104-9624 Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for the creation of new account lines and fund eighty-one zero four dash ninety-six twenty-five Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant as outlined on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations of eight thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars in the personnel category, nine thousand six hundred fifty dollars in the supplies category, and six thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars in the services category for a total appropriation of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Right. It's Ms. Kelly.
Uh, so this is just a grant renewal, so this helps to support our emergency preparedness. Uh, we do have funding uh that's allowed for a part-time assistant. Um, but primarily, we use it for uh travel supplies um and services.
All right, questions, comments from counselors? Not seeing any. All right, we'll go to comments from the public. If you have them, come forward in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kelly. Thanks for waiting through all that. Let's move on to the next request, which is item eighteen from the Waste Reduction District.
Counsel, I move to approve the Waste Reductions District request for an additional, of an additional appropriations and fund eighty-two ten operating in the amount of ten thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars in nonsense and the capital category.
Second.
All right, and Mr. Tom McGlasson has been waiting here very patiently all night. Mr. McGlasson.
Uh, good evening. Uh, yes, uh, do appreciate, as always, your consideration of these requests. Um, uh, as in the, mentioning the materials in the packet, uh, the request is uh really for us to try to uh uh bring our education and training room up into the twentieth century, I guess. Uh, uh, the first part of that is uh replacing uh tables and chairs that um, I think the chairs, I'm pretty sure, are original to the building when it was built in nineteen ninety-six and have never been replaced. Uh, upholstery has stains, there are missing feet and wobble. Um, it's, it's just time to replace those. Uh, and some of the tables, I'm sure, are also uh in a thirty-year-old range. Uh, some have been replaced over the years. Uh, so we have tables of varying, you know, ages and conditions. Uh, the finishes don't match. And so what we're wanting to do is uh uh replace those tables and chairs. Um, the chairs we're getting are almost identical to what we have. Uh, the tables, we're replacing what's uh what I consider to be a more standard conference table uh with, with what's called a training table. Uh, so it's a little narrower in depth. Um, and uh they fold up, so they nestle in together uh and are much easier to store. Uh, they have uh locking-wheeled casters on them, so they're much easier uh for our staff and the Purdue staff to move around and rearrange the room. Um, as mentioned in the request, you know, that we, we do share our, our office space with the Purdue Extension Services. Uh, and they utilize the room as much or more than we do. Uh, so there's a number of uh, a number of things that occur in there that require a different setup. And the room is rearranged uh multiple times a week. Uh, and this is something that we think will uh make that a lot easier on the staffs. Uh, the last thing that's included in that uh is some money uh for some uh large monitors. Uh, currently, we have a pull-down screen uh that we project up onto. Um, and the, the screen has, over the years, with children being in the room, has gotten marked on and, and has some defects on it. Uh, so we'd like to use those monitors. That'll give us um, uh, two displays uh in the room for better viewing and a bit, a little bit larger and, and a better resolution. Um, so we do have, you know, some of the groups that come in, that we do have uh uh younger children and, and some elderly, um, you know, participants and groups uh that, that meet there. And uh, the, you know, easier visibility will uh make things much easier for the groups using the room.
Thank you very much, Mr. McGlasson. Counselor Iverson.
Well, as a body that is enjoying brand-new chairs, brand-new tables, and monitors that we can read your comments more easily, I, I'm very much in favor of giving you what we have.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Let's go to the public. If you have a comment, come forward in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Excuse me. Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, let's see here. Uh, item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Waste Reduction Department's request for an additional appropriation and fund eighty-two eighty-three debt service in the amount of three hundred fifty dollars in the services category.
Second.
Mr. McGlasson.
Uh, yeah, I think this is uh, it's something that we briefly discussed, I believe, during the budget work session, uh where unfortunately uh, the bank that manages the bond that we took out to close the landfill uh raised the annual agency fee. Um, we were notified of that uh in October of last year. And it was, the notification was received too late uh to, to make any amendments to the budget that had already been submitted uh to be approved uh with advertising deadlines and such. So unfortunately, we do need uh that additional appropriation uh so that we can cover that agency fee that'll be due here in the next month or so.
Okay. Questions, comments from counsel? Small price to pay, right? Okay. Public comment, if you have it, come forward in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Right, that takes us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for waiting again. It takes us to item nineteen, the request from the Prosecutor's Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the prosecutor's request for creation of new account lines and fund eighty-one twenty-one ninety-six dash ninety-six twenty-six poker grant as outlined on the agenda and simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of one hundred fifty thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-six cents in the personnel category and three thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars in the services category for a total appropriation in the amount of one hundred fifty-four thousand nine hundred seven dollars and seventy-six cents.
Second.
We were fortunate to have Beth Hamblin patiently waiting for a long time now from the prosecutor's office.
Sometimes, some nights are like that, aren't they? Um, this is an award that we've received. It's a reimbursable grant that we receive through ICJI, Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. We've received it for probably about thirty years. They are awarding a two-year grant this cycle. So the funding runs from ten-one of twenty twenty-four through nine-thirty of twenty twenty-six. And it funds a portion, about a third, of four victim assistant positions that we have in our office.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments from counselors?
I do want to clarify that I'm requesting to um appropriate the full two-year term for this.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Does any counselor have a question or a comment? All right, I don't see any. We'll go to public comment. If you have them, come forward in the NatU Hill to the podium or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote. Can I do a voice vote on this by chance?
No.
Nope, okay.
It has additional appropriations. Sorry. Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Thanks for waiting. And now on to item twenty, a request from the Youth Services Bureau.
Counsel, I move to approve the Youth Services Bureau request for the creation of a new account line or new account lines and fund eighty-one twenty dash ninety-six twenty-five Runaway and Homeless Youth Grant as outlined on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of one hundred forty-five thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars in the personnel category, seven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars in the supplies category, and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred eighty-four dollars in the services category for a total appropriation of one hundred eighty-two thousand ninety-two dollars.
Second.
We're fortunate to have Vanessa Schmidt with the Youth Services Bureau who's patiently waited as well.
Good evening, counsel. Um, so yes, we're just here. We were um awarded through some hard work. We were re-awarded our RHY grant through the Department of Health and Human Services. This is a three-year grant, but it requires a continuation every year, so we're here just to request the appropriation of the first fiscal year's funds.
All right, thank you very much. Questions, comments from counselors?
Just congratulations.
Thank you.
This is probably a good time for my grant reminder that all these departments, all the elected officials going after and receiving these grants put dollars into this county that the taxpayers are not paying for per se, and it gives such a gift to the community. We lose these dollars, it would be massive. And so we appreciate very much going after them, bringing them home to us and modeling that so we get more dollars like that. All right, other comments, questions? Seeing none. Let's go to public comment. If you've got it, come forward in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, let's go to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Youth Services Bureau request to amend the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance and fund eighty-one twenty dash ninety-six twenty-four and eighty-one twenty dash ninety-six twenty-five Runaway and Homeless Youth Grant to add account line seventeen six zero one longevity in order to pay eligible employees in accordance with the longevity scale outlined in Section C of the ordinance notes with an effective date of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All right, Ms. Schmidt.
Great, thank you, counsel. Um, so while we're here to appropriate the new grant, we're also asking to amend the salary ordinance to allow us to add in that longevity line. We also discovered that we have not been here to do that in our previous grant year, and so we're asking that you retroactively approve it for the previous fiscal year as well.
Questions, comments from counselors? Having read all of the salary ordinance earlier tonight, all of it made perfect sense to me. I remember what all that was. Other comments? All right, seeing none. Let's go to public comment. If you have it, come forward in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good night. Let's move on to item twenty-one, a request from the Aviation Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Aviation Department's request for the creation of new account lines and fund eighty-nine fifty-four dash zero 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 AIP Project Number Forty-three as outlined on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of two million four hundred two thousand two hundred forty-four dollars in the services category.
Second.
All right, we're fortunate to be joined by Carlos Laverty, our Airport Director.
Good evening. Uh, yeah, the airport was awarded uh a two-point-four-million-dollar grant to complete Phase Two of our airfield uh lighting upgrade. This'll complete the uh, the second half of all of the uh, the new LED uh lighting and signage for Taxiway Bravo and Alpha at the airport. Uh, really excited to uh push through and kind of complete this overhaul of our airfield lighting system. And so this is a grant which is uh funded ninety percent by the FAA, uh end dot matches five percent, and the local share is uh five percent, and the commissioners have kicked in to assist the airport with this as well. So we are asking for the uh, the grant to be appropriated and the creation of these three lines.
Thank you very much. We'll go to comments and questions from the counsel. Counselor Iverson.
Yeah, I, I noted in your submission that uh both light systems are considered to be failed. Are, are they working at all currently? I mean, we've got a big game coming up on Saturday.
Yeah, so the, good, very good question. Yeah, these, this was a, an emergency program that was started about two years ago. The uh, the main runway uh had some significant issues, and so we initiated a pop-up uh project with the FAA and affected immediate repairs to the main runway, which services the large commercial aircraft that uh any of the Big Ten teams would utilize. That's the sixty-five-hundred-foot-long runway. So that was completed. Um, all the lights were installed and the signs were installed on that about a year ago, uh, along with the uh parallel runway that serves that main runway. And so what we have left now that needs to be completed is um some auxiliary uh taxiways that serve uh the Crosswind runway, which is a thirty-five-hundred-foot runway, and the southern portion of Taxiway Alpha. So they're not really critically important for any of the commercial activities. But um, yeah, they've been, these, these lights have been uh inoperative now for almost two years. But we've installed a uh, in the meantime, while we're waiting on Phase Two, we installed a reflector system, which is still uh, um, it still meets FAA regulations, but it's, it's not, it's not optimal.
Yeah, let's, let's fix this and get to optimal.
I agree. Yeah, I'm excited to see this through.
Other comments or questions? Again, noting a massive grant, appreciate the work to go after and to maintain what you need to maintain, so we get it, right? And uh, so it's not going somewhere else. And also, I, I, anytime I think about public structures going in areas of the airport where I instantly now get my haircut is a good reminder. You do too, Counsel Iverson?
No, but it's a great place to get a haircut, I heard.
It is a good place to get a haircut, but it is a good reminder of a large institution in the middle of a residential area that is functioning quite well. And so um, I always think about that. All right, other comments? Seeing none. Let's go to public comments. If you have it, come forward in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams. All right, seeing none. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Let's go to item B on twenty-one.
Counsel, I move to approve the Aviation Department's request for a fund-to-fund transfer of cash from Fund Forty-eight zero two dash zero 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 Aviation Building to Fund eighty-nine fifty-four dash zero 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 AIP Project Number Forty-three in the amount of sixty thousand fifty-six dollars.
Second.
All right, Mr. Laverty.
Yeah, so uh, again, uh, the local portion of this project is a hundred and twenty thousand, uh, one hundred and twelve dollars. And the airport is uh requesting to transfer sixty thousand dollars, sixty thousand fifty-six dollars out of our building fund into this project. And again, the uh, the commissioners have graciously uh agreed to kick in the other half of that local share.
All right, thank you very much. Questions, comments from counselors? Yeah, Counsel Wiltz.
I'm only asking this because the commissioner's administrator is in the room, but is the other part of the matching that he's referring to, I just don't remember, did that come out of the bond or like, where are you, where are you getting?
It's coming.
Item number twenty-two.
I need a nap?
Me too.
Long agendas have lots more to do and surprises.
Oh, my gosh.
All right.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? All right, let's go to public comments. If you have them, come forward in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams. All right, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the Aviation Department's request for creation of a new account lines and fund eighty-nine fifty-five dash zero 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 AIP Project Number Forty-four as outlined on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of one hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars in the services category.
Second.
All right, Mr. Laverty.
Okay, the airport was the recipient of another FAA grant for uh the acquisition of two zero emission vehicles. So with that grant, um, and through some uh, some cooperation- So with that grant and through some cooperation with the FAA, we acquired two electric trucks. They're kind of like light-duty pickup trucks, and the goal of that is to offset some CO2 emissions at the airport. So we are able to sideline two of our, like, heavy-duty plow trucks that we need for the winter time, but they've also become our 365-day-a-year get-around vehicles around the property. So we're able to just use those now for snow removal operations or anything that really requires the heavy-duty trucks. So that grant total is $174,943. The FAA funds 90% of that, and Endot came in at the last minute with another 5% match, and our local match is 5%. And again, the commissioners are going to assist the airport in the share of our local match. So for this portion, because the commitment from Endot on their 5% came in late, it wasn't expected on this project, but it came in nonetheless. So on this, on this project, on this request here on D, I'm sorry, where am I here? I lost myself here.
You're on C.
C. So on C, because we are receiving an Endot amount on this project, I need to request a third line be created, 30082, for $8,747, and that will, I will take the Endot match of 5%.
Wait, how much was that amount? And does that decrease the county match, or is that in addition to the county match or the contractual?
It reduces.
It reduces, okay. So we're still good with advertising that?
Yeah.
Good. All right. Questions, comments from councilors? Yes, Counsel Iverson?
Let me offer a quick comment so that the math can be done on this. For those of you interested in federalism, this is a great example of it. We've got the federal government, the FAA, the state government, Endot, and the local government in Monroe County working together on climate issues. This is how government works, and when there's a policy that needs to be put in place to save our environment, here it is. This is great.
Very well put. Other, Counselor McKim, you've got an amendment here?
Yeah, Counsel, I move we add line 30082 contractual dash state match in the amount of 8,747, and simultaneously reduce line 30081 to 8,747. Second.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on that. Many seconds. Sign of positive passage, perhaps. All right. Any discussion on the amendment offered? Let's take the amendment by voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, the underlying amended motion is before us. Other discussion? I will say, this is a huge night for the airport with all this, Mr. Laverty, and I know you're painstakingly doing a lot of work with a lot of folks, B, D, C, federal, state, otherwise, and it shows. So good night for the airport. Proud of it.
Thank you. Happy birthday to me, too.
Is it your birthday?
Yeah, yeah, it is. I wouldn't have it any other way, sharing it with my favorite people, the Monroe County government.
You're a saint. I can't believe the federal, state, and county got together and got this done on your birthday night.
Hey!
Good job, Congress. One for the votes. I don't know how you got them to do this right. All right, we love them. Any further comments? If not, let's go to the public comment. If you have a comment from the public, please raise your hand on Teams or come forward in the NatU Hill. It's a big day for the airport. All right. Seeing none. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you. Let's move to item D, Airport.
Counsel, I move to approve the Aviation Department's request for a fund-to-fund transfer of cash from Fund 4802-0000 Aviation Building to Fund 8955-0000 AIP Project Number Four in the amount of $4,373.50.
Second.
All right. Mr. Laverty?
Okay, again, yeah, to fund the airport's portion of the local match here, we're requesting $4,373.50 from our building fund into the project and the line number 00992. And again, I just want to let it be known that the commissioner's office have, they have graciously stepped in to take care of the other 50% of the local match. Much appreciated.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Comments, questions from council? Everybody's just happy.
Yeah.
All right. Let's go to public comments. If you have them on this item, come forward in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams. All right. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counsel, Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Happy birthday, Carlos. Good to be with you tonight.
Thanks, you. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Thank you.
All right. Let's go to item 22, a request for the commissioners.
Counsel, I move to approve the Board of Commissioners' request for a fund-to-fund transfer of cash from Fund 1138-0000 Cumulative Capital Development to Fund 8955-0000 AIP Project Number 44 in the amount of $4,373.50.
Second.
This is, Ms. Purdy's been waiting graciously on this. This is closing the loop on all this, right?
It is, and answering Councilmember Wiltz's question. So this is actually for Project 44, the one we just finished with the airport. And so it's just our half of the 5%, basically.
Okay. Comments or questions from councilors? All right. Seeing none. Let's go to public comments. If you have them, come forward in the NatU Hill to the podium or raise your hand on Teams. All right. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right. Let's go to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Board of Commissioners' request for a fund-to-fund transfer of cash from Fund 1138-0000 Cumulative Capital Development and Fund 8954-0000 AIP Project Number 43 in the amount of $60,056.
Second.
All right. Ms. Purdy?
Okay, again, this is just closing that loop. This is the commissioner's 2.5% of the 5% that's outstanding for the local match.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments from councilors? All right. Let's go to public comments. If you have any, come forward in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams. All right. Seeing none. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, and on to item C.
I was just going to say, sorry, happy birthday to Carlos. I didn't get a chance to say it.
Happy birthday, Carlos.
All right.
Right. Item C. Counsel, I move to approve the Board of Commissioners' request for an additional appropriation and fund 1,000-0161 County General, County General, County Buildings in the amount of $15,000 in the services category.
Second.
Ms. Purdy?
Okay, thank you. We are currently in the red in this particular fund, actually to the tune of $9,898.46. So the $15,000 is just really going to get us back in the black at this point, so I'll be back probably for our trash. Part of this is we have taken on the obligation up at the showers building. Up until recently, we had enough leased space that would cover the costs of the showers expenses. So that's going to affect all of our utilities, which is, I'll be back with a lot, with more of those things anticipated. But this is, we're just seeing a huge increase in our trash pickup expenses. I think I spoke about this during our budget session, and I know that Mr. Kreider is actually reaching out to different providers of trash services. We've given them some basic information that we'd like for them to fill in for us so that we can see who might be the better provider, and anticipate that we will be looking for, or we will be getting a different provider in the future.
All right. Yeah, Counselor McKim?
So no chance that you have anything else that you could transfer to fill in that?
No, absolutely not. And that's something I need some clarification on, because this caused a bit of a tizzy. So when you ask us to transfer, then what happens is I end up with other accounts that are in the negative. And the auditor's office, you know, said that the state board of accounts intention is that when an account is budgeted, that it's expected that you're going to pay that, that you're going to use all those funds, which is how I submit my budget, which is I anticipate, and I try to get it as close as possible. I really do. I do not inflate my budget. So I try to have it as close as possible. So then what happens, so the transfer, in theory, I don't have extra money in these other accounts, especially at the beginning of the year. Now, I do believe, and this has happened in the past, that after the first half of the year, I've got a pretty good idea of what our expenses are, and I can then look at some of the other lines and see if there's, if things aren't going better, then I can transfer. But when I transfer at the beginning of the year, as per what I thought I was supposed to do, and maybe that wasn't completely accurate, it ends up, I end up with a bunch of account lines that just are a mess, for lack of better words.
Counsel Wiltz?
Because I've looked at some budgets critically for a lot of the transferring and things like that, so I wanted to jump in and at least give you my understanding. The transferring to cover a line that is surprised, you know, has surprised us and you need more, is to be done if you can reasonably think that you're not going to need all of something. So in, you know, in the employee lines, you know, if you know you have a vacant position, or, you know, you can, you know it better than I do. So that's my understanding, and, you know, I think good practice would be to note when and if you do that, but I don't think any of us would want you to make a line negative because you were covering another line, for sure. That, you know, just compounds the issue, and obviously the auditor probably has the final, the final say on those things. But that's my understanding of our recommendations to departments.
Other comments or questions?
Yeah, I wouldn't disagree.
And I appreciate that, and I think that, as I said, you know, my misunderstanding of the expectations of counsel has caused me, I will be on your next agenda also, I think, with a lot more, because our county general is a bit of a mess. So try to get that straightened out and go forward from there.
Okay. Yes, Counsel Wiltz?
You brought up that some of these expenses are as a result of fewer leases on showers? Yeah, I actually, so I kind of combined some information there. So initially, in this particular request, I made the request before we knew that we were going to be taking on the expenses from showers. However, I don't think it has significantly impacted the trash line in this particular situation. Now, next month it will, so. Okay. Okay.
Counsel McKim?
So on the leases, do we have vacant space that should be leased, or is this space that's now being used by county government?
So that's an interesting question, because it does, the, you know, is the government, should we really be in charge, responsible for leasing space? I personally don't like it. That doesn't matter about anything.
But yeah, we bought showers, though, with that.
Yes. So that said, we do, we are looking to move our county health clinic, you know, our employee health clinic, to space in showers, which would then provide our current health clinic more space that they are seeking. I know, and I'm not going to be able to answer your question, because I'm just, so, and that will be a much better place. There's, parking is going to be much better for things of that nature. The other thing is, we need to be looking at the future with the convention center expansion. The current early voting center will be gone, and so we need to look at some, at least temporary, space in showers. So at this point in time, I don't believe we're marketing any of the free space. I think we kind of have dibs on it.
I mean, I agree with you philosophically that we're not, you know, in the commercial real estate business, and that ultimately, the reason why government should be buying buildings is to house government functions. So, yeah, I don't disagree with that.
Other comments or questions? All right. Well, on this item, we'll go to public comment. If you've got public comments, come forward to the podium here in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams.
I just want to reiterate Counselor McKim's last statement that government buildings should be for government functions. There's no reason to be presenting our county government as a manager of commercial real estate, and that includes things like proposals for an expanded convention center. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We'll go back to the motion, and if there's no other public comment, and we will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor, Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right. Let's move on to item D.
Counsel, I move to approve the Board of Commissioners' request for an additional appropriation and fund 4808-0000 2016 General Obligation Bond Account Line 42505 Parks Vehicle Tenet Scrubber in the amount of $6,882.92 in the capital category.
Second.
Okay, thank you for this. I can only surmise as to how this happened, that we kind of lost some funding that we failed to either reappropriate in the future years, but we have $6,882.92 that we're asking to be put in this particular line, and I cannot tell you, I knew there was something I was supposed to do, as to what that will bring that account line up to, but I do know it's sufficient enough where we could assist Parks with the purchase of some kind of vehicle of sorts.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments? Counselor Wiltz?
Thank you for doing this. I love to see those little nuggets found and utilized, and what
And what does tenant scrubber mean?
Oh, that's been the question for for years now. We I believe it's some kind of cleaning machine.
It's the brand. It's a brand of a scrubber.
Tenant is a brand.
It truly has been a mystery until recently.
If you Google it, the pictures are pretty self evident that Mr. McKim is right.
I believe you.
It's not for scrubbing the tenants of the showers.
Literally like, that sounds horrible. You should not be doing that.
Thank you. I want to thank you because it's actually found this doing the bond information that you guys had requested. So, thank you.
And thank you for being very positive about that process because I do think it's produced a lot of dollars that can go to to these good causes, such as the tenant scrubber. All right, other comments? Okay, we'll go to public comments if you have any here in the Nat U Hill. Come forward to the podium or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deck? Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim? Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay, let's go to item E.
Counsel, I move to approve the Board of Commissioners' request for the creation of a new account line and fund 1237-0000 opioid restricted as outlined on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations of $15,000 in the supplies category and $220,000 in the capital category for a total appropriation of $235,000.
Second.
It's Purdy.
Okay, so this, as you'll see, the next request is to transfer funds. When this, when we received the state grant for the opioid harm reduction, there was the perception that there was a local match that we had to do. However, thankfully, actually, the Auditor's Office was the one who was like, you know, it's not really a match. It was a pledge. And so and it's true. They are giving us X amount of money for the project and everything that we pledged isn't part of that grant. So we want, we need to put it back into the opioid restricted fund where it began. So this is just getting those lines appropriated based on what the county had pledged, but is not part of the grant.
Go to comments. Counselor Iverson?
And unless I'm mistaken, the property has already been acquired, the vehicle vehicle has already been purchased, and the harm reduction supplies have already been used. So this is not put into any way the the purpose of the grant that we've already approved.
Oh, yeah, no, this, yeah, those those things have all been done. But we're still purchasing the harm reduction supplies. Because in the grant, we have, I think, we have more money in the grant. For those.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Other comments, questions? Let's go to public comments on this. If you have comments here in the Nat U Hill, come forward or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go, I want, before we move forward, am I seeing Counselor Hawke online? I see, no, that's it's Angie Purdy. I saw a small poodle and that swat through and I was like, I want to make sure we don't miss her on those. Yeah. Did you say Bruce?
Yeah.
Sorry, Bruce, we mistook you for Counselor Hawke's poodle. All right, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay. All right, let's move on to item F.
Counsel, I move to approve the Board of Commissioners' request for fund to fund transfer cash from Fund 9164-0000 opioid grant RFF 2023-007 to Fund 1237-0000 opioid restricted in the amount of $235,000.
Second.
Okay, and this is just providing for the the cash being moved back to the original fund where it belonged and will now provide for the the lines that you just created and appropriated.
Any comments or questions, councilors? All right. Go to public comment. If you have public comments, come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams.
Joe Davis, I just want to say, go opioid reduction. More power to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, let's move on to item G.
Counsel, I move to approve the Board of Commissioners' request to deappropriate account lines and fund 9164-0000 opioid grant RFF 2023-007 outlined on the agenda and the amount of $15,000 in the supplies category and $220,000 in the services category for a total appropriation of $235,000.
Second. How many times can we do this same?
I know.
I know, sometimes my eyes are crossed on this one.
So this is just the final phase of this whole process.
All right. Any comments or questions? No, we got it. All right. Public comments, if you've got them, come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. All right, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. And I want to say thank you to the Auditor's Office and the Council Office because I lost my mind over this opioid particular issue. And they were all very gracious. So just want to say thanks.
Thank you very much. As counsel, as we head into item 23, which is our traditional place where ARPA items are, I just want to note that we are not able tonight to move forward on the ARPA request that came out of that very positive joint Commissioner Council meeting. Just be on technicalities, we need more information. I know the auditor and Michelle have indicated that we'll work to get that and we'll work with the Commissioners' Office. I do want to note for folks, and I've heard from some folks watching at home, they have an interest in that. Obviously, the Council has expressed its intent along with the Commissioners to be supportive of rural transit issues. And we had some hunger issues in there as well. My mind is is blanking on some of the, maybe some of the other details, but that is coming. I think that's hopefully at our next council meeting dispensing of that. And we will have at that point less ARPA anything and more, just enjoying the implementation of that. But I know that there's some folks concerned about that. I want to note that that we're not blocking or delaying it. We just need to perfect it for the items. Counselor McKim?
Yeah, just to just to clarify, it was basically just make sure we're all still in agreement. It was the Rural Transit Shadow Service. It was the partnership with Bloomington Transit to serve the West Side Employment Area, two generators for Hoosier Hills Food Bank, a generate a portable generator for emergency management, and then the remainder to go into the rural housing repair. Is that all right?
Yeah. Good job, Jim.
I do want to note, thank you for listing them again. I did receive some information, both Counselor Munson and I did, that I can forward from emergency management that may help us a little bit more with that. But yes, those are those items and certainly our commitment is there. All right, so we'll take care of that technically down October 25th? What's our next?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth. You've had to tell me this 12 times. Twenty eighth.
It's late.
We will deal with that.
So clarify it's a motion to table until October 28th?
We don't need to table because we readvertise the ARPA with higher amounts to accommodate any larger end of year kind of stuff. So we don't need to table.
Counselor Iverson?
I think if we're done with the ARPA stuff, if I could, item number 15, I think does need to be tabled as well unless someone has gotten a hold of that individual.
Have you come back to that?
Are we able to go ahead and do that since we have information on?
On his request?
Yeah, on the request, and it's not something that seemed overly complicated.
I'm willing to.
Counselors, let's do this. Why don't you take you about 30 seconds to review that in your packet? If you have that comfort with it, let us know. If you don't, we will not do it. But everybody take a look at that just to make sure we're doing our due diligence. And I'll, final thing on just the ARPA items, I want to make sure that we try to get that completely as best we can done late October. So people waiting on a January 1st, where's my transit funding? They know heading into November where they're at. All right, councilors, we will move off of item, the ARPA item to item 15, the library. Have councilors had sufficient time to review that? And do you have comments?
Actually, I'm sorry, can you just point out where it is in the packet? If somebody can give you a page number, that would be.
One thirteen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor?
I talked to Gary. It's I'm certainly supportive.
We will need a motion to open that first.
One second. All right.
You're doing just fine.
Okay. Item 15. Counsel, I move to approve the Monroe County Public Library's request for an additional appropriation and fund 0061 rainy day and the amount of $500,000 in the personnel category.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion second. Counselor Iverson, discussion?
Yeah, I was wondering if someone with more knowledge on the situation can bring us up to speed. The three or four sentences in the packet talk about an unusual situation the library is in. Is this just end of the year issues or is it because of the damage that happened at Southwest Branch or what's the unusual situation they're in that they're coming to us with this?
Well, I don't I don't know that, yeah, I would not want to speak on their behalf. But I know that this is is the first year with the new, you know, running the with the new branch. And so my understanding is that this is a this just in case that they're they're not necessarily going to need it, but they're going to be right against their budget and don't want to be in a position where they can't pay.
I am very much in favor of of this and and of our library systems. My kids love this branch. I just want more information.
Thank you very much. Counselor McKim?
And just to be clear, this is not our rainy day fund. This is the library's rainy day.
Absolutely.
This is sort of the catchall that we have locally of assisting them in their processes as a safety measure of adoption. Okay? Other comments or questions? All right, councilors, we'll go to public comment on this item. Item 15, the Monroe County Public Library's rainy day fund wage consistency request. If you haven't come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams.
Hello, Joe Davis here. While there was the one minute recess to bring the rest of the councilors back in, I walked down to the MCPL to see if there were any administrators available so that they could come and speak to this issue. There weren't, so I spoke with the the highest ranking librarian on duty at the moment and showed him how somebody would be best to be able to speak about this issue. So he was going to email and make phone calls in order to try and get someone to show up or zoom in. And it looks like he was not successful. But I, as a member of the public, fully support appropriations to the library because they do so much more than just provide books. They have become a refuge for many of our citizens who have no refuge. And the the staff are highly trained and they really bend over backwards to accommodate all peoples in our community. So if they need some extra help, please help them. Thank you.
All right, Counsel McKim?
And I just want to be clear that the controller for the library was in the room at the beginning of the meeting. I, you know, I I don't know what happened, but presumably he had a conflict when our meeting ran ran long. But they did, you know, he certainly was here for a good part of the beginning of the meeting.
All right. We've got public comment accomplished. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Right, thank you very much. Let's go to item 24. Michelle wants to talk to us about council meeting schedule for 2025.
I will make this as quick as possible.
And there was no vote on this tonight. She's going to show it to us and then if we have comments, let her know.
This is just, yeah, just, I would like to bring this back to council at the 28th. I've already got departments asking for our next year's schedule so that they can start scheduling. This calendar is option one. What you'll notice here is budget sessions to start the last week of August, so the Tuesday and the Wednesday of the last week of August. We finish that up, we get everything in September, we finish those dates up in September, they're in green. We then get everything into Gateway, get it advertised on the 19th. And because there are five Tuesdays in September, we could hold the public hearing on the 30th, which is doesn't normally conflict with anyone because it's the fifth Tuesday. So then that would put, we would also add the public hearing, trying to save time, this kind of thing, do the first reading of the budget following the public hearing. And then we can go and have adoption on the 21st of October. So that would put us a week ahead of where we're at now.
You're very excited about this, aren't you?
Yes, I am. So we could also, if if you want, you could eliminate October the 28th because you would have that extra meeting there if you wanted for, you know, so you could combine your adoption and the last meeting for October. With November, November is a scheduled county holiday on the 11th. So you need to decide, do you want to have a meeting on a Monday, the 10th, Wednesday, the 12th, or another day? I just need to know that. So that's option one. Option two.
I've noticed everything started to come in options of three when dealing with us, which is good.
I'm giving you option two. So option two is relatively, it's the same thing, only it's moving all of the budget sessions to September. So everything would be, you know, the first three weeks, if we finish everything still that on the 17th, we can still get everything advertised on the 19th, we can still do the public hearing on the 30th. So that's the only difference is doing all of the work sessions in September. We will eliminate having a council meeting on the 9th. So because we are having so many meetings. So.
In both options.
Um, let me pull up the other one real good. I think I.
I'm not even looking.
Yes, yes, on both options, we would be eliminating a meeting of, on September the And we've done that in the past, we've eliminated a September meeting, we try and work with the departments, if it's an absolute emergency, we kind of, you know, put it into the budget sessions if it has to, but we would move everything to the other meetings, so.
One item I would just note to Counselors, and this kind of came up when this first draft happened, however you're feeling about the last kind of August, September, October that you've been through, whatever happens next year, knock on wood, will be perhaps a little less congested with the number of issues that we're dealing with. I probably have just put us in a real bad way by saying that, but theoretically, Counsel's time to focus on budget will not be as interrupted by other things. Counselor Iverson.
And I will note that in the fine print at the bottom, it does indicate that on the second nine-two, the PAC meeting will not be taking any more requests, so that's going to help.
Yes, yeah, I forgot to mention that. So we also eliminated on both options any PAC meetings in October, November, and December. So hopefully, the idea is that departments come in August, make those requests, and then in September, we get the decisions, and then that way you can add those to the budget workbooks at that time. So that's the whole idea, so.
In theory.
In theory. But we've tried this before and scheduled PAC meetings after, afterwards, because departments felt like they needed things done before the beginning of the next year, so.
Since we're missing Counselors tonight, everybody take a hard look at this when you've got a little more sleep, weigh in on this to Michelle and let her know your candid thoughts, as I know you will.
We want to share, going, moving from this to one, one more item. I did, and I will share this with you. This is a summary of all of the budgets and their, the amounts. As it has related to COLA. So I put on this, which I will share with you, so the office administrator position that you approved for the probation office was budgeted at eighty-six, or, yes, eighty-six thousand. And so with the new COLA amount, there's the ninety that's needed. So they'll need roughly four thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars for the 2025 budget. Don't, don't look at this here. I was just trying to put it in where you could see this is how much general fund is. Okay. The request for the Employee Services is going to cost a total of one eighteen, nine forty-five. That includes the addition of that fourth position. And then the auditors. So the total amount for all, if you go with all of the recommendations and everything for 2025, it's going to cost one hundred and thirty-nine, zero seventy-nine in general fund. Highway is coming at a later date for theirs, and that's how much it's going to cost for that new position because it was not included in their budget. So that's seventy-eight, five seventy. This is the salary, the FICA, and the perf, so.
Counselor McKim.
So we've already heard from the recorder that we don't need to increase the Recorder's budget. I believe I heard, now that, of course, this, the Auditor's request hasn't passed yet because it needed a second reading, but I heard the Auditor commitment to at least try to not increase her budget on that one. The one I'm most concerned about honestly is the new position in the payroll administration. I, I understand the argument for it and think that it's needed, but I, I don't think I can support increasing the budget for that position unless we can find a way to, to pay for it. So remember that this would have to, bless you, this would have to be, the budget would have to be amended at second reading, at our final adoption. So there'll have to be a motion, you know, an affirmative motion made to pass any changes to that budget. And I will say that I would only support the motion to increase, to fund that payroll administration position if we can find something to cut by roughly that same amount.
You also can have departments come back and request additional appropriations. So we don't have to change the budgets other than trying to reduce them.
Right.
So.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm staking out my, my position here.
And I think it's a good point to literally not dump that on your successor to figure, figure that out next year, or a more optimistic budget, I don't know, would allow for it. So I guess between now and adoption, we've got to figure out roughly that amount if there's a spot somewhere in the budget, maybe we can put our efforts towards that. I know.
And I'm not sure.
Looks like the cat denied the canary there.
I'm not sure if there's any flexibility in the storm waters budget, that's where that position will go, is into storm water, but I will reach out to Lisa and see what she thinks.
Nope, nope, that's.
And that's all I have, I just kind of wanted to give you, this, it's here, I'll try and make it a little cleaner for you, but I was just kind of, I did the fiscal impacts for 2025, I just, I, for all of these positions, so.
Can you say, or is there already out there a spreadsheet that shows everything that we have adopted or voted on so far, so that if Counselors, for example, want to look for eighty thousand dollars?
Yes, I, I'm just, I was working on trying to clean it up so it's easier to search because when I download things from Lau, it's really a nasty spreadsheet, so, yes, I will. I'll get it out there and get it to you guys.
All right. Anything else on that? If not, I'm going to, on item twenty-five in Council comments, I'm going to ask Counselors, you recall at the beginning, I said I was going to ask for this, items you would like to see on that joint meeting we have with the Commissioners, the Judges, the Sheriff, and a few other people discussing jail property. Is there anything specific you would like to see on that discussion for the agenda that night before we offer it to the others and try to get some sign off? Obviously, location.
Yeah.
In the room.
And I just want to be clear, I'm not going to be able to make that meeting, you know, I'm gone that entire week, so.
That's right. Thank you. Counselor Crossley.
In addition to the, the location, I think the comparison and contrast of Vernal versus North Park, since we obviously have had members of the public that have, you know, have deep feelings, and I think we all have deep feelings on that as well, it would be nice to see the comparative analysis. I think we also talked about having a spreadsheet like that already?
Yeah.
I, I could recall, but that's been four scores and three years ago, so, that being said, I swear, I thought, so if we could do something like that, that would be helpful, but I didn't think that we were reinventing the wheel because I already, I thought that kind of thing maybe was in the Commissioner's Office, and we were trying to think about bringing it over so that we can also have it as well, but that's something that personally I would like to see.
And Counselor Iverson, you have, you've done some work on some of this, have you not?
On, so we just uploaded Mr. McKim's spreadsheet on the budgetary. We, Commissioner Githens has had developed a spreadsheet on the cost of different locations, and then there is currently a, an Excel spreadsheet on the JFAC website that has the POP count, the personnel in the jail over time. I went back about a year to find that, so there's that. I would add to what Councilmember Crossley said, to say that it would be nice to get an update from DLZ if possible on a square foot estimate of the jail. I know for a lot of the presentations, we've been looking at a facsimile of the Hamilton County Jail placed onto a lot. I think now that we've passed a budget, DL, or I think the architect and the construction manager have a lot more room to play with in terms of their own budget, and it would be nice to see that square footage number updated.
Any other items? And Counselor McKim, if there are things we can convey or do, don't hesitate, which I know you know, but.
I just want to clarify something, we have not, all we did was adopt a tax rate. We have not actually determined a budget for the jail.
That was very helpful, yes, I misspoke, thank you.
One item is, and I want to offer this from the microphone here before the public, though I recognize the individuals watching at eight forty-seven PM at night are probably few and far between, but thankfully, we are covered well by the news media, including especially the B-Square Beacon. One thing I just offer, and I've said this, I just want the Counsel to know this, I've said this to other entities repeatedly, if there's something about a site that you like, don't like, and have thoughts on, and of course, that extends to Counsel too, but I'm saying this externally, I think just in this meeting, being upfront with that to Counselors is a healthy, positive thing to do so that we have that narrated out in the open. We've certainly been to public meetings where the public has had comments on sites, but I think, for instance, if the Judges would have a thought, or the Sheriff's Department would have a thought, I think just being candid in that public discussion's really our best thing, and I think it's okay to, to be candid, I think it's okay for us to ask questions from it, and in a democracy, for people to engage back and forth like that. But I just think that we're at a point now where it's time for the, I don't know, for the extra discussions, maybe not in that candor, to kind of go away and to get to the point. It's, it's just time, there's, life's too short, let's just be direct with that. And in that way, we're narrating this well, and the public having that discussion, answering questions, and on down the road we go. So anyway, does that sound good to everybody?
Yeah.
All right, Counsel, you've been through a lot tonight. Any further Council comments? Counselor Iverson.
Really quickly, I encourage folks to read the latest B-Square Beacon article, which highlights collaboration between four Monroe County employees across departments on a really cool project that benefits the residents here. Kudos to those four employees and to Dave Askins for catching that story.
Thank you very much. Other Council comments? One thing I'll note is early voting is very much underway, as the meeting started, I could see the hours posted there. I attempted to go last Saturday, and then I forgot, it's not available. Probably on a busy election like this, that Saturday would have been a wise choice, but I'm not in charge of that. But, but I do think the Election Board would be wise to monitor this activity because I know from my old days at the State Election Division, every bit of early voting that occurs now takes pressure off Election Day, which is literally like a business doing business for twelve hours in finite conditions. So again, for folks, take advantage of early voting, get that done, thanks to all our election workers that make this happen, it is not easy to do. And with that, Counsel, if I see nothing else, we did a lot, thanks for your patience tonight, thanks to our staff, thank you to CATS for all this, as well as our friends at TSD who have the patience of Job. And with that, we are adjourned.